Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, August 13th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. We'll have an invocation from Pastor David Jackson with the Hilltop Church. And then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Young Adult Development Association of Havasu, Yacina Chikhan.
All right, am I on there? All right, let's have a word of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you that we could come before you. We pray that you bless this evening, bless these men and women who are willing to serve our community. We pray that they make wise decisions, Lord, make decisions for the best of our community. We pray for our community members, that you bless them, and pray that we remember to have manners and we don't always have to disagree, but we can be polite and respectful. We pray for that to be done, and we pray for your wisdom and that you are glorified, Jesus, in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome if you'd like to share a little bit of what YADA is doing.
Yes, we would. Familiar, YADA is a works with a community, is a community coalition that helps youth, families in educating prevention efforts for substance use, substance use prevention. We have events like Hobbies Not Habits that introduces new hobbies to the youth in the community to engage them in more of community events or hobbies so that they can stay away from substances and be able to have something more positive going on in their lives, as well as our Walk Away From Drugs, which this year, our Walk Away From Drugs event is going to be taking place Thursday, October 24th at 4:30 at Rory Park Ramada A. So really, for those of you interested, there are fires right outside in the back table. If also, if anyone's willing to have a table set up, well booth, they're more than welcome, but fires also up outside in the table. So yeah, it's a free event. We hope to see everyone there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is our roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers, Viancie Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Jenny Koch. Jim Dolan.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cameron Moses.
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is our consent agenda. Would any of the councilmembers like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
Motion.
Please.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is our correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 6.1 is to announce the vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Here in City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member and one alternate member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.2 is our city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. A few things to share with the council and the public today, or this evening, excuse me.
No, there'll be a call to the public at the end of the meeting where we'll have an opportunity. Yes.
The Lake Havasu Youth Advisory Council, otherwise known as HIAC, officially kicked off its first meeting of the school year. We're thrilled to have 13 students who have already joined HIAC, with even more students in the high school that are expressing an interest in getting involved. HIAC was first established back in 2010 under the leadership of then-Mayor Mark S. Nixon. This council was created to serve at the pleasure of the mayor and city council with the purpose of fostering leadership and encouraging the exchange of ideas amongst our youth. Lake Havasu City Police Department Cadet Program recently received a generous donation of $2,500 from Sonny and Sheetal Patel, owners of The Quality Inn here in Lake Havasu City. Chief Troy Sterling accepted the check on behalf of the program, and we're very grateful for the, to the Patel family for their support of our community's youth. Lake Havasu City Police Chief Troy Sterling recently honored Rebecca Main, owner of Main Stitch and Upholstery, with a plaque recognizing her for her generous donation to the police department. Main Stitch Upholstery contributed over $2,000 in materials and labor to reupholster the equipment within the department, the exercise equipment within the police department. So we appreciate Rebecca Main's support, which was, has greatly benefited our wellness program and our police officers in the police department. Thank you. I'd like to thank Mayor Kalshihi, our councilmembers, and especially Chief Poloffis and the fire team, and all of those in the community that joined us this morning at 9:00 AM for the push-in ceremony at Fire Station 3. The push-in ceremony, as Chief Poloffis described, is a history, a tradition that dates back to the 1880s, and it's a way of introducing a new fire engine to the station. At that point, it is now ready for service ceremoniously. So we had a lot of people from the community join us and really a great event. Chief Poloffis, thank you for bringing culture, history, and tradition to Lake Havasu City's Fire Department with our badge-pitting ceremony, our walkouts, and today, Lake Havasu City's first push-in ceremony. So thank you, chief. I do have an update on the burrow gathering by, that takes place by BLM. The gathering began on August 5th, and as of today, the BLM has notified us that they've successfully gathered 94 wild burrows out of the 100 that they, that their goal is through this, through this operation. This operation is crucial for ensuring both public safety and the well-being of these wild animals. The animals are gathered and transported to the Florence Wild Horse and Burrow Training and Off-Range Corral, where they're made available for adoption or purchase to individuals through the Wild Horse and Bureau Adoption and Sales Program. There are rumors, unfortunately, that take place throughout our community about these burrows being collected and then euthanized or sold to un-CD parties or corporations. This simply is not true. These, these animals are protected by federal law, and, and there's lots of precautions that take place. These are animals that are adopted and made available to the, the public for, for good things. A reminder for older motorists that the wild burrows are still on Highway 95, particularly at night, as they cross back from the lake, as they drink during the day in the lake, and then they cross over 95 into, back into the desert in the evening. So please, especially in the nighttime hours where it's hard to see them, please drive carefully and look for the, the burrows in the, in the area. And lastly, to wrap up my report, I'd like to present a video about the ongoing roadwork that is what we call the City Core Paving Project. And I'd like to thank Bill Young and Steve Blake for putting this video together.
Hello, everyone. I am Bill Young, Lake Havasu City Superintendent of Transportation. The city is doing work in our downtown area to upgrade the water main mines, service connects, and fire hydrants, as well as repaving these streets. To help citizens, businesses, and visitors, we will be communicating through press releases and social media about street closures, travel delays, and detours. Our goal is to help everyone get to their destination in this area as easily and safely as possible. From August through November, the streets being affected are as follows. Swanson Avenue from Highway 95 through Smoke Tree Avenue. Riviera Boulevard from Swanson Avenue to South Palaverdy Boulevard. Smoke Tree Avenue, north from Swanson Avenue to Mesquite Avenue. McCulloch Boulevard from Riviera Boulevard through Smoke Tree Avenue. When you need to drive in the downtown area during these months, please give yourself extra time to get to your destination. And remember, there is almost always a different route that can be taken to get to the businesses and scheduled appointments. We encourage you to learn a new route, see a part of the city you haven't seen before. As a wise man once said, "The really happy person is the one who can enjoy the scenery even when they have to take a detour." Thank you for your patience and understanding while we make these critical improvements. Have a great day.
Thank you for Bill Young for that video. Of course, we want to invest into our roads and utilities underneath the road, and we're very thrilled when these projects are completed and we can enjoy the, the outcome, but takes a little bit of patience. So appreciate everyone's patience as we go through the construction timeframe, and we're looking to close everything out by end of October, maybe early November, as far as all the construction that's taken place for a road. And then we'll do it again next year. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is our public hearings. We'll have a series of public hearings this evening. During each of the public hearings, the citizens will have an opportunity to engage in the conversation. We'll open each public hearing. When doing so, you just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record, and make your comments directly to the city council. There will be a light indicator box that will be countdown on all of the screens around us indicating the amount of time that you have left, and it also will change color from green to yellow to red when your time is up. We do encourage you, if you have any comments, questions, thoughts on each of the public hearings, to do it at that time. Again, at the end of the meeting, we'll have a call to the public, and that will be an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City, but we can't have a two-way conversation during that part of the meeting. We can just listen intently because it's not already on the agenda. I'll go over all that when we get closer to that item. But we'll start with item 7.1, which is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Waters Edge Winery at 2200 Mesquite Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Here in City Council, Todd Patrick Wiley has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Waters Edge Winery located at 2200 Mesquite Avenue. All application and posting fees have been paid and no objections were received. Staff recommends approval of this liquor license. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance tonight to answer any questions from the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams or the applicant on this item? All right, seeing now, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor. Jim would like to say something.
Make a motion.
Councilmember Dolan?
I guess I'll make a motion. I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Water Edge Winery, 2200 Mesquite Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan. We have a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for the Poor House Restaurant and Lounge located at 2093 McCulloch Boulevard North, number 100. Ms. Williams?
Here in City Council, Jeffrey William Maury has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for the Poor House Restaurant and Lounge located at 2093 McCulloch Boulevard North, number 100. All application and posting fees have been paid and no objections were received. Happy to answer any questions. Staff also recommends approval of this liquor license.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council for Ms. Williams or the applicant? Seeing now, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll get back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Moses, please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series number 12 Restaurant Liquor License for the Poor House Restaurant and Lounge, 2093 McCulloch Boulevard North, number 100.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.3 is adopt ordinance number 24-1340, amending Lake Havasu City Code Title 14, zoning development code, sections 14.02, .03, .e, Table 2, 6, to increase maximum density in R3 district from 10 dwelling units per acre to 16. Also, 14.04, .01A, .1 Table 4.01-1, to revise the minimum maximum density in R3 district from 4 to 10 dwelling units per acre to 4 to 16. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Advance the slide here. This text amendment will increase the density available in the R3 limited multiple-family district from 4 to 10 to 4 to 16 units per acre to permit more variation in project designs and create more overlap with lower-density RM multiple-family district densities. R3 districts have a max 15-feet height limit, so they will be one-story projects, and many such projects are proposed on smaller lots where density issues have required PD rezones in addition to minor general plan amendments because the underlying land use category did not match. The existing zoning on the properties is an issue affecting many properties in the city that will be fixed with, with the, hopefully with the upcoming general plan amendment update. As these R3 projects are required to go through design review, which is full site plan analysis, and thus meet all design standards from the development code, development code, including the upgraded parking from, that was up by the council last year, buffering, landscaping, access, dumpster enclosures, et cetera. This only serves to cause unnecessary delays for these smaller multiple-family projects. Additionally, by adjusting the density range, and let me advance this slide here to, actually, let me use this, I'm going to go back to this example right here. This is a recent project that was before the council. Under the current density standards, this project met all the design review standards and site plan development requirements from the ordinance, buffering, landscaping, everything. And this is the density that the 4 to 10 would allow on this property right here. With the, with the 4 to 16 proposal, what was ultimately approved, which is this, that still met all the criteria and was approved by council, is, this is 16 units per acre right here. So by adjusting the density range for R3 will provide a greater flexibility for development options by overlapping with the RM multiple-family district. Now, I'd like to show that with, with this slide right here. This table shows how all the existing residential densities overlap up to where the R3 max density does not overlap with the RM district at all, and that's the top table. The bottom table shows what this would look like in the progression with the 4 to 16 for R3. I use the mouse here to kind of highlight it right here. So it'd be a range of four, which is in the single-family range, up to 16, which is mid-range for multiple-family RM. This proposal does not exceed the range of the multiple-family RM district, but it provides a good range for developers, depending on the smaller size of property that they have. And again, it's all single-story, none of this is two-story buildings. Gives a range from a single-family density up to mid-range multiple-family, depending on the size, shape of the property. So Planning Commission recommended approval of this item by a vote of seven to zero at its July 17, 2024 meeting. Mr. Mayor, this completes my staff report, and I'll answer any questions you and the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Are there questions from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I have a question, and it is relative. I keep asking, what happened to the landscaping on Highway 95 across from the London Bridge Resort sign? It's relative. Does anybody know why that, that landscaping keeps being destroyed on the Highway 95? Yes, I want to know the reasoning for that. Do we know?
Across from the London Bridge Resort?
Yeah, the sign for the London Bridge Resort on the right-hand side, if you're heading to the northbound.
On the back.
Oh, just before the bridge.
Yeah, the backside of Burger King. Mr. Knutson?
If I can, Mr. Bill Young, himself.
Because I asked, yeah, I've already asked, I haven't gotten an answer. I want an answer before I can go ahead and add a comment.
That was from our second sewer main break there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
Yeah, also, let's just clarify the location. This is the backside of Filberto's and Burger King. So it's, that's the area that we're talking about?
No. It's, it's been broken three times. So yeah, if somebody...
The east side, so it's the backside of, of the Burger King for Butchers area, area. So, okay.
Okay.
Next question?
Now, okay. I'd just been asking that question, and I pretty much knew the answer, but I wanted to hear it. Finally, that's the truth. In 2005, we did a sewer project, and we did a general plan for the sewer. I understand these processes as, I'm involved in these kind of businesses, and many questions that they ask firsthand is, how many bedrooms, what's your zoning, what's your commercial zoning throughout a community before they start the planning process? Fast forward, in 2016, we did a general plan where it was, I don't know how much this development, this sewer plan was brought to attention, I'm sure it was, on what the community can actually withhold as far as changing from a commercial zone to a residential zone or vice versa. I know the capacity changes a lot when you go from a commercial zone into a high-density residential. We are getting ready to go into another general plan. I've been patiently waiting for us to get there. I look forward to that very soon. I think they're talking about it this year to start the process. I also talk with staff, and we've talked about taking a look at their original 2005 sewer general plan to see if all these zoning changes are, are going to be okay for our community moving forward. So at this time, I will not be moving forward on any density changes until at least we put these processes in place. I just want to make sure that our infrastructure is safe. I'm concerned about the island. I'm concerned about high density, and I'm concerned about a lot of these commercial zones been turned into high residential density. We've seen some situations, including with city-owned septic tanks that were converted from a commercial to a residential for residential, and it's put a lot of burden on that. And our Public Works Department is the ones running around trying to fix some of these things. So either we have some things we need to fix and we're fine with doing these high densities, or we are not. But I need to have that answer before we do any more changes on zoning. There's my statement.
So, so more, more of a statement, I don't know what your initial question has to do with density, because those are commercial areas, that the sewer main break?
No, it has to do with that, because I was stating that we're having problems already with sewer breakages. Why? I don't know, but let's get to the bottom of it before we start changing densities. And, you know, we should probably manage what we have. It's no different than we talked about it last year with the redundancy of the water. Look at how close we got to that. We won't discuss that tonight, but look at what we did. We did some really positive things that were in the best interest of the community. We moved it forward, it was great. Now, my concern is sewer. My family sees it. We know what it looks like. I know what the Public Works Department is having to do. So I just want to, and not only that, those disposable, washable, you know, toilets that we're all putting into sewer systems across the country, they're having problems with this, this, this conversation that I'm having right now. So I think it's negligent in my part to continue to add density after density after density without making sure our system can handle everything that we're doing right now. And it's been 10 years since we've done a general plan, eight years, and I, and it's been almost 20 years since we did the original sewer design plan, and we have varied way off of that from the original plan. So.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Knutson is our sewer master plan is from 2005. Isn't there one that's more recent than that?
So we have a wastewater master plan that was done in 2022, and, and then a water master plan that was completed in 2019. Those are the two documents that we have. Those are updated every five to seven years. So the water master plan is obviously slated for, for an update, and that'll be recommended in next year's budget.
And with all due respect, I got a wrong information on that originally when I was, but we corrected that. He, I got told something different by the staff just earlier this week, and so it gave me more concern for these kind of agendas coming up. I did not know that the water waste until right now, that the wastewater general plan was updated in 2022.
A little, if I can, Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, you're right. So we talked about the two master plans that we have for water and wastewater. We, as a staff, believe that our water master plan is not very good. I misspoke and talked to, when we spoke and said that the wastewater master plan was not very good. So I, I corrected that on the record. But a couple of things. So 2005 is we went through a capital project where we do a design and then we, and then we make the improvements based on the design. It's, it's not a master plan. And then there's just a little bit of confusion, and I'm just trying to delineate where we're at with some of these conversations. So the master plan, those are done every five to seven years. The 2005 sewer project was a project that was designed and then constructed, and then, you know, and then as we see growth, we, we assess those different impacts that, that take place to the system, and we work as a team with the government services individuals and our experts in public works to make sure that everything is done correctly, and there's no negative impacts associated with that. And then, yeah, then we talk about a general plan that's updated by state statute every 10 years, and it's eight years old. We put in the budget to start that process now, we'll take it to the voters, and then we'll have a general plan that is our 2026 general plan. So I think what's important, I think, if I can, Councilmember Campbell, you're talking a little bit in terms of like densities, and we, when we start talking about changing certain areas within the community from residential to commercial, commercial to residential, residential uses water and sewer services at a different rate than commercial does, right? So everything that we do when we get an application for like a rezoning coming in from the private sector, from a developer or builder or otherwise, if we get a building permit, excuse me, a building application from a developer that wants to build several homes, these have construction in Havasu, it's going to have an impact on our water system, it's going to have an impact on our wastewater system, it's going to have an impact on our street, it's going to have an impact on public safety. So these are all important aspects that we need to make sure that we completely understand strategically in the short term and the long term, and what does that look like? In many cases, if somebody, if a developer or builder comes to the city, wants to rezone or is proposing a big construction project, we have to make sure that there are traffic studies done and that there's studies done on the impacts to our, to our systems. And if they're proposing something that's going to have an impact, we want them to pay for the study, and we want them to pay for the improvements that are associated with that study, whether it's traffic, public safety, roads, utilities or otherwise. So, and we do, there's a, there's a concern. We have to be smart about this. We can't just take an application, build something, and, and expect that our existing system is going to account for the, the increased capacity, if there, if there is any. But I do, I'd love to bring a presentation, work session or otherwise to the city council the next couple of months, and then be able to have a conversation on what is the process? So we get an application coming in from the, from the public, how does staff handle that? We have pre-application meetings, and we have different requirements and standards that take place, and a lot of that, you know, takes place behind, you know, not nefariously, but behind closed doors. Where all of our experts are studying, our engineers are studying it, our planners are studying it, our, all of our experts across the board study that. So we want to tell that story a little bit more and what that process looks like, so that there is a bit of a, a little bit more of a confidence level with what, what that looks like. You know, we're, we're simply, city staff is not taking an application from the public and then handing it to the Planning and zoning commission. There's a lot of work that takes place behind the scenes, and if it'd be okay with the mayor and the council, maybe at a future date, I can bring that forward and, and share that, that process. Then we feel much better about the long term, and, you know, if there's things that we want to change, then we can address them through that process, too.
I want to thank you for that answer. It was great, and we've had these conversations, and I do look forward to having those conversations in the future. I just don't understand why we're having to do all these zoning changes right now when we know that we, we may or may not have a problem. And my level of expertise tells me that when you go to do a plan development, the first thing that the wastewater engineers or designers are going to do, they're going to ask you, what's your zonings? How many commercial zones do you have? How many, how many stories are you going up? And, you know, from 2005, when we had the original plan for Lake Havasu City put in place, which was very tedious and a very big project, and now fast forward to 2016, and we were taking densities four stories high on McCulloch and, and changing the direction. Well, I'm fortunate to say I have seen a lot of the infrastructure underneath there, and I have my concerns. And I, I know the citizens voted me in and obviously want me to speak my truth, so here I am speaking my truth, and I do look forward to that workshop coming up very soon and that we could all be educated and giving me the confidence that when I do another zone change like this, I don't have to worry about what happened on Yucca Drive. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other, Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if somebody has this answer. How many current areas that are zoned R3 that are undeveloped do we have right now?
Most of the areas that are R3 zoned are down towards Highway 95.
Most of the areas that are R3 zoned are down towards Highway 95 and are higher density areas and up the McCulloch corridor is where our R3 is. And there are several lots that are undeveloped. We just recently had Inlet Drive, which was pulled actually from the agenda before it got to council. But and then there's the the one segment that on McCulloch, about 2880 that came through. And we have a number of other lots that are undeveloped still in the R3. The highest density that the city allows right now is in the urban core, the CCHD mixed use zones, where those have no limit on density, but they have minimums. The R3 is a very low density, single story zone. So that's why we're trying to, trying to even out the the ranges here to give more flexibility to developers. There's not many left. It's not a high impact zone like like the CCHD would be. We get a major project there that could go four stories high, for example. Similar to the view, but this would certainly help for the single story developments where the low end of the limited multiple family district, R3 range of four units per acre in many cities. The quarter acre lot is your standard single family lot. The low, the low end of the range of four is that in many other cities around the country. It's your typical single family lot at four units per acre. So this is a very low density to be calling a multiple family. Yes, it does say limited and that's because limited in height, it's also limited in density, but having more range options would be very helpful for allowing developers to work with unique situations on the properties that they're purchasing. The, one of the big issues in the next hearing on the RSGD zone, one of the big issues we're facing is the property values in town make it prohibitive to put projects on a lot of these properties without a density that makes it feasible to even do the project in the first place. So it's really a choice between the ground staying vacant for potentially a considerably long period of time or possibly being put to a to a to a use that benefits the taxpayers, benefits the the city in the form of revenue to do other improvements around the city. So there are benefits, there are downsides. Yes, you get more people. But is that better or worse than having vacant grounds sitting there undeveloped? So I don't know. It's a decision the council needs to make.
Kind of, it answered a lot. We don't have any specific, like, you don't have a specific number though of how many R3 zone lots there are right now.
No, we don't know how many vacant parcels are remaining. It's not many because there's not a lot of R3 zone property in Lake Havasu. But this, so the the overall impact on the whole city as a whole is going to be minimal. But in the specific areas where these projects pop up, such as on inlet, could have a significant impact in the vicinity of where they're located. Yes.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
If I'm wrong, I remember back in the day, an R1 was single family, R2 was a duplex, and R3 used to be a threeplex, R4 was a fourplex. I know we've changed all the names. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, but that's what I remember being in this community forever. And now I'm seeing an R3 being four to 16 units. Those things are concerning to me. So am I correct on what I recall the zoning used to be and did we, we're just changing the garbage or?
Zoning has changed a lot over the years. The R4, the R4 district had no, no density limits. In fact, R3 didn't either in the previous code. If they were already a platted lot of record, there was no density limit to it. And that was something that I was discussing with the director today. Yes, at one time, the the density may have been lower on that and progress happens. And at this point, what staff were requesting is the council to consider allowing these remaining R3 properties to become more developable in the future. And that, again, is a policy decision for the council.
Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I have a question and I think Mr. Young will probably be the one that would be able to answer this the best. Councilmember Campbell talked about the break in the sewer line that's there and it's east of SR 95, south of McCulloch Boulevard below the Walgreens there. We've had some breaks. Were those breaks because we added too much to the system or are they breaks because of the deferred maintenance?
Mayor, Counselor, I am not Billy Young. Just wanted to speak to that. So basically, the last couple that I'm familiar with anyway that have happened, we had a pipe break that just was corroded and so you can call that deferred maintenance. The last one that we just had was a pressure release valve that didn't release and it just blew the top out of the saddle, just really the elbow of the the line there. And it was working fine. Those are actually inspected on a monthly basis and it just failed. So no rhyme or reason for that, but that was repaired as quickly as we possibly could and that was unpredicted because we are basically inspecting those on a pretty regular basis. So.
Mayor? Mr. Kooten?
Councilmember Lynn, Director Foggan, and a lot of what we have in within the community too is we installed several years ago, iron ductile pipe, which at the time was all cities and across the country, we're we're installing this type of, you know, pipe. Was not a good move for anybody that that did that. So we're seeing failures just 10 years later in some of these. So when you look at wastewater, it's not a constant flow, right? So anytime that you have anything, a pipe that's empty with an iron ductile, it's going to rust and it's going to decay at a much quicker rate than other materials that are used for pipes. So when we install a pipe now, it's a, you know, super, super heavy PVC type of pipe that that takes place there. So which is one of those things. There's lots of things across the board. We're trying to replace all that iron ductile pipe on as much as we can. We've done a lot of that, miles of that in the last several years. But yeah, there's, there's Mr. Foggan, Thielak and the team and the wastewater division keep very, very busy, making sure that everything's flowing in the right direction.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because the way I understood it, it was that it was it was because of failures in the system, not because of adding people to it. The next question I had, or my statement to this is both of these are, one is multifamily, R3, the other is multifamily RM. So if we have a developer that wants to build, say, an apartment complex, we have a four to 10 through the R3, a 10 to 20 through the multiple family. Normally what they've been doing is coming to us and requesting to move from an R3 to an RM so that they can have a higher density, which then also means that they can go up in height. By adjusting this for the R3, which is also limited multiple family, they can continue and put additional units on that lot, but not go up in height. Is that correct?
That is correct. The height's limited 15 feet.
So what it does is it allows people to build multiple family on a lot. And over the years, we've talked a lot about workforce housing and the city needs to do something, the city needs to do workforce housing. Affordable housing, I won't say because affordable to one person isn't affordable to somebody else. But one of the things that we said as a council, we don't build houses, but what we can do is make it easier for these developers to be able to build multiple family dwellings here in Lake Havasu so that our workforce has a place to reside. And I think by bumping this from 10 to 16, but still keeping it at a single level and they still have to abide by all the other rules, the landscaping rules, the setback rules, all of those other things. So it's not like they can just come in and start throwing lots of apartments on there. They still have other things that they have to abide by. So I think it's, it levels the playing field for those developers that are willing to build apartment complexes or multiple family complexes. But if they have an R3 lot, then they don't have to come back to the council for an RM lot and then we don't have to worry about whether or not they, once we approve it, they're actually going to put a two or three story building on there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lynn. Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, thank you. Why 16? What's the science behind how you came up with this number as opposed to what it is now?
We looked at, we looked at some of the recent projects and 16 seemed to be very reasonable density when you consider all the requirements that are being asked developer through the site planning process to accommodate drive aisles, covered parking, uncovered parking, dumpsters, buffering, landscaping. There's a lot of things that go into the review process. And it looked like 16 was something that would allow a reasonable density. For example, this is a good example right here that we use. It might look a little tighter, but when you compare it to what the the current R3 allows of this, when you space those out more, it's a very, it's, it would be very spread out if the space, if the units were spread aside. And another, another example I like to give is we have worked with three developers in the last few months since this got started in the process that are waiting, I can't name them because they haven't filed an application. But they're waiting to see what happens here. And a couple of them are dealing with smaller R3 lots where they're looking to do a four unit instead of a three unit. So this impacts the smaller R3s, which most R3 left is the smaller lots. And you're going to get these, this situation happen where they don't want to come in and apply for a PD rezone, have to do, change the general plan because it's not correct under it to add one unit to their property. They don't, they don't see that as beneficial to, for that particular parcel. So there are some of these cases hanging out there and that also helped us with with deciding that this particular density would be a good number to assess and also given the density range, the four to 16 is a, would be a much broader spectrum that could feasibly address all the requirements of zoning ordinance and provide a reasonable project to developer without putting additional time and cost restraints on them. So that was the logic behind moving this forward.
Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Mayor, can you go back a couple of slides? Two slides? Okay.
This one?
So I, forgive me for not knowing any of these terms or anything. So if they were able to change, this is what it is zoned at right now. And go to the next slide. If we vote tonight, it will give the opportunity to do the second slide?
That's correct. This is what the council ultimately approved when this came before you as a PD. This is the density and it met all the the site planning requirements, single story buildings. This is the maximum density that would be allowed in the R3 zone at 16 units per acre. That's what you're seeing right here.
Okay, so my next question, and I'm really naive to this. Is there a minimum size that they can put on here? Could they put 16 units on this specific lot if they made them smaller units? Could they, if they wanted to put, with the zone change, could they put 16 little tiny things on here if they wanted to? Is there a minimum?
There are, there are minimum, minimum habitable space requirements from the building code and zoning code. And I think the director can, can refer to that.
Yeah, Mr. Tounamun?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Jeff Tounamun, Development Services Director. To answer your question, it's not based on square footage. It's based on the dwelling unit itself divided by the number of acres of that property. So I'm not very good at math, but if you had five dwelling units and this was a half acre lot, you take the units divided by that 0.5 acres and that'll give you a number. And that's how many units per acre that comes out to. So it's not a one for one type ratio. If that makes sense, it's based on the size of the lot and number of dwelling units.
This specific one that he has up here, could they go back and could they put 16 on this one or is that? No, they couldn't.
No, I think they, I don't quote me on this, but I think they might be maxed out on that.
That's what I was looking at.
I think that's nine units. Based off of that size lot, that was the maximum they could do was up to 16 is what they asked for.
Yes.
As Mr. Gilbert spoke, you know, we've been seeing these come across the last two years, basically, I feel like. And we did take an average based off a lot size we've seen. We have some smaller ones, some larger ones, based off of what they can meet all the standards. I just can't reiterate that that's how we kind of came up with that four to 16, looking at our RM district as well and getting that little overlap there. To answer your question, Ms. Lynn, Councilmember Lynn, it looks like just looking at an aerial at our R3 lots that are developed, it looks like it's about 25% vacant left. So there's, there's not a lot in these R3 areas. So, and I'd like to point out what Chris said earlier, Mr. Gilbert, that prior to 2016, there was no density minimum or maximum on these R3 lots. So there's a lot of R3 lots out there that are actually at this 16 units per acre or more right now, based on that. So just like to bring that to your attention.
You, Mr. Tounamun. A couple of things, just to get us back focused on what we have in front of us tonight. What Mr. Gilbert has up on our screen right now was an action that was approved from, by this council for a previous project. It's just here for examples this evening. We're not talking about a zoning change at all tonight. We're talking about a code change that would allow for this type of density to go forward. My perspective on this is from, based on the limited number of R3 lots that we have remaining even available and how many are left to develop, this is efficiency in government. So the, these developers are already coming through, going through the process. They have the neighborhood meeting. They go through planning and zoning, they come to council. And as Mr. Tounamun mentioned, over the last two years, they're, they're getting that approval, going through that process. Some of the concerns that Councilmember Campbell had when it comes to infrastructure, roads and parking and those types of things are still addressed through the the staff process when they go through this. So what we would be doing if this code change were to be successful this evening is we would be allowing the opportunity for more flexible housing opportunities for our citizens. So that's a concern that we receive from lots and lots of folks about having different housing options for for people to be able to live in. And if they're already going through the process and they meet the infrastructure, they are multifamily lots in that respect. So are there any additional comments or questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing where anyone would like to address the city council on this item. Yeah, please just make your way to the podium if you have anything to say and state your name for the record.
Vicky Murray. And do I have to give my address?
No.
Okay. My concerns are, where's the infrastructure up front? If you guys have zoning already in place and everywhere in this town, why is that infrastructure not being addressed before you start rezoning? You have affected my area alone in more ways than infrastructure of allowing zoning to change before that's verified. And consequences come back to us taxpayers, the residents of this town. I'm tired of being abused. I've been trying to get the infrastructure done in my neighborhood for 12 years after you guys went through your plan for 10 years. Where's the going water lines? Where's the pool dumping? The chemicals on my street alone is eating it up. Where is the concern? I think you guys need to relook at re, infrastructure in this whole town and stop changing the zoning, stop moving forward and finish what's already in place and correct what's not in place. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council during this item? No, this is only specific to this action item in front of us.
Patrick Willett, resident. My concern is, like Mr. Moses, is how did you go to the 16? How, how come you don't go to the 14? Or 12 or it's, it seems like a large jump from, you know, 10 to 16. That's, that's my one concern. The other concern is I, as I drive around the city of Havasu, I notice a lot of these little housing projects all over the place. And a lot of them look empty already. I mean, we're continuing to build these things, but I don't see a lot of them occupied. And what's the coding on, are they going to be for sale properties, for rent properties? The rent properties were probably better for, like you're saying, workers and stuff like that would be at rental price. So do we have the developers agreeing to making these, not, like you said, not affordable, but common, you know, good reasonable price for a rental property? Or are they going to put them up for sale for $300,000, $400,000 and sit there empty? So those are the couple of the concerns I would have on if going forward with this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willett. I'll take a swing at it and Mr. Gilbert, if I'm to answer some of the some of the questions, if I can't, then I'll, I'll turn it over to you. Uh, when it comes to, uh, property, it's really important to understand that everyone enjoys private property rights. So if somebody purchased the, is the property and they have the ability to have, uh, the, the quiet enjoyment of that property based on the zoning that's, that is within that area. Uh, we can't force somebody to turn into rentals or into a for sale or any of those types of things. We can't tell them what they can charge and what they can't charge for, for any of those types of things. Everybody has that same ability, uh, for, to enjoy private property rights. When it comes to the four to 16, Mr. Gilbert, if you could move to that, I think it was the last slide of, of here where it showed the different, yes, thank you. Oh, yeah. Right there. Yeah. So, uh, what, uh, the staff is, is trying to achieve here is to try and find some overlapping areas within, in the zoning. So four to 16, although 16 seems like a very large number, the chances of that number happening are very slim based on the amount of inventory left in the R3 zone. Again, as Mr. Tounam mentioned, it's a math equation. So the size of the lot divided by, um, the number will give you the actual number that are allowed. So, um, it just because you have an R3 lot, if it's a half acre lot, you're not going to be able to do 16 units. You'll be able to do, uh, the, what the equation allows for. So, um, it, but there gives some overlap where that is so that, uh, the folks that are developing these things, you know, and we sometimes loosely use the word that we, we're building, we're building. It's really the person that owns the property is investing their money and they are doing it. They're doing it based on the codes that are within, um, our city. And they have, as, as we all do, that own property in Lake Havasu City, the ability to go through a process and ask for something different through, through a, a zone change. And that would go through a public process through planning and zoning, neighborhood meetings, and it also then would come to city council as we are this evening. Uh, but to have that overlap with the four to 16 gives that ability for flexibility when it comes to the efficiency of, of putting these things forward. Uh, so I hope those answers, answers your question of where it's at. So the number 16 seems scary. The chance of it ever being 16, you'd have to have a really large swath of, of R3 property for you to achieve that. Uh, would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Bonnie Toy. To quote one of my favorite council members who uses a quote by the great Gordon Graham. If you, if it's predictable, it's preventable. You are saying that it is by allowing them to have 16 units instead of 14, that there could be problems, but you are saying, but the chances of that happening are slim to none. However, I imagine if you would look at, um, LabCorp parking lot, that when they planned for that 20 years ago, they probably never planned for that whole parking lot to be full of doctor's offices. It wasn't even LabCorp then. It was kitchen design thing. So you're promising us 16 units will never happen. I don't, I don't think you can say that. Also, I think Ms. Campbell has a point and does the sewer system, is it able to contain that density when it wasn't even designed for that? I remember that crazy vote for the whole sewer system back in 2003 that I know I voted no on. And, uh, they had the option of small pipes or larger pipes and they chose smaller pipes from what I understand and remember. Although they did get really pretty sewer cover, sewer hold covers. Those, those are really pretty. But, um, I don't understand, one, how you expect us or anybody to think that, well, you, you can't understand that. I can't understand that. The 16, you can't promise that they're not going to have 16. You can't promise that they aren't going to maximize all of that. But how is, were these codes developed before the sewer system or after the sewer system? And won't that impact the whole water flow also?
Yeah. So the, um, I never used a single time the word promise, but you used it several times in, in your comments. So what I was talking about is the 25% of, of the R3 land that's left are smaller parcels. That was today in today's hearing. That's what was told to us. Then the code, regardless of how this, this goes, there's a math equation. So based on the lot size, once you divide that out, it tells you how many units you can build on that, on that particular property. Just because this is four to 16 does not mean it'll be 16. It's whatever the math equation comes out. And then you still have to go through design review at the staff level, which will take into account all of the infrastructure components, as well as a, a lot of other things that Mr. Gilbert went out, went over earlier, um, as well, when it comes to that. When it comes to the sewer and the sewer infrastructure, um, it, just because it's said, doesn't mean it's so. So it was, it was planned. We have three water treatment plants in, in Lake Havasu City. We, we developed that, uh, piece of infrastructure with the sewer bond initiative to take into account our additional, um, uh, growth within our community. It was most recently updated as Mr. Knutson mentioned, uh, in 2022, uh, and will continue to, to be updated when it comes to the master plan. Uh, again, just because something is said, doesn't mean it's so.
Correct. Just because, but I did hear you say that the chances of it being 16 is slim.
Unless you have a large swath of land, was the rest of that statement.
Yes. Okay. And you just said that, um, yeah, all the word salad I got lost on. I apologize. The, um, sewer system, you believe it was designed for 100,000 people?
You are really good at putting some words in my mouth today. I did not say that. I said it was.
Question. It wasn't putting words in your mouth.
That's not what I said. I said it was built with capacity to anticipate our future growth.
Okay. And our future growth is how many people?
Yeah. Mr. White, I don't, I don't have that answer in front of you, in front of me. So.
I've heard you say it several times that our future growth for our city is, um, maxed out, uh, supposedly at 100,000 people. So was the density for the sewer system prepared for that 100,000 people and all the increased density?
I, I've answered it multiple times. The, the sewer was installed to anticipate future growth.
Philip Blevins, I got a question for you. Um, you talked about the growth of the city, but every time you see a new apartment thingy going up or all these growth in the cities, they cut a trench across the road. It collapses. They do not fix it. If you leave here today, when you go drive home, every time you go down one of those new buildings or one of those new, uh, affordable housing, there's a trench across the road that's done. The ground's not compacted. It's not filled right. It sinks. So we have to tear up our cars on the road because they're not being held accountability for their projects. Every, every time you drive down a road, I want you to look at a new house and there's a trench where the road has collapsed. That comes out of our pocket. And if you get all these houses on a rotten pipe right here and you keep adding and adding and adding to it, the price, the pressure puts on those rotten joints and they collapse. So then we have to pay to repave the street. How many times has the street been repaved and it blew it out right here and repaved over here, repaved over here. And don't get me started on the, the rock chip ceiling because the cracks are not being filled in. The gravel wasn't laid down and the tar wasn't put over. If you go down Pelletverden, you look how black and nice that road looks. That's a chip seal. These roads right here, as soon as you leave, look at the cracks in it. So what happens when it rains and the water gets under the pavement, it lifts the whole thing up. Money's just being thrown out. Millions of dollars on that stuff. When you rock chip seal a road, you should lay down the tar, the gravel goes on it, the tar goes back over the top of it. The road's beautiful. No, you lay one layer of, of tar down, you throw gravel everywhere. I meant everywhere. Motorcycles are wrecking, the, the liability is through the roof and the tar doesn't get down. So the, the amount of money that's being wasted is mind blowing to me. And we keep doing it every year. Fix it, right? Or stop wasting our money on it. The pipes are rotten. It's growth, growth, growth. You don't have enough structure put in to handle the growth. So that, and nothing gets done. How many years? 10 years. This one's been doing for six years. Nothing's, nothing's fixed. Now the electricity in this town is just mind blowing. That's on another subject that the ACC's fixing to get sued over. But man, we, we gotta fix what's, what's happening right here. Growth isn't, growth does nothing for us. It skyrockets the, the, they're not affordable. The housings are not affordable. All that crap is sitting over there empty. There's no parking lot for that. There's no parking lot for the businesses we have here. So we're failing and we're failing miserably on the amount of money that we're pumping into this town and we're not, we're not fixing it. We're putting crap on top of crap. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah. Is, uh, Mr. Knutson's, uh, city manager report earlier talked about all the infrastructure we're doing and, and the core project. We're redoing all the infrastructure underground as well as, as above ground. It's balancing and that's, we're, we're finding that careful balance. So, yeah.
Hi. My name is Dawn Greek. Um, hearing the number 25% of R3 vacant properties, I don't think that gives us members of the community an actual grasp on how many properties there actually are. Because when you say 25%, 25% of what? If there's 10 available properties that 16 units can be built on instead of 10 units, that's an extra 60 units that our city has to figure out the infrastructure for. So 25% of what? I'm a hard numbers person. Under 10 properties, under 20 properties, under 100 properties. That makes a huge difference when you're talking about the density.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah. It's 25% of the R3 lots that are left, uh, but 20, uh, point, points well taken. Yeah. Points well taken. Yes. Hi. Good evening.
Frank Ortiz. Excuse me. I think the biggest issue that you guys have is that you have a general plan that allows a 16 unit break. You have a zoning plan that doesn't match the general plan. Well, you adopted in 2016, that general plan. And if I read what a general plan is, a general plan is a set of policies and programs that guide communities' long-term development and can help improve quality of life. So how do you fix it? The general plans allowed me and you, you saw me here a couple of months ago and you were actually 100% correct, except you forgot one thing. The new parking requirement. That threw me off. I had a project that could allow 11 units. I'm down to nine because if, once you start with the setbacks, the easements, the maximum coverage on the lot, the parking requirement, the spacing between the units, there's no way you can put 16 units per acre. I'm sorry. I wish, but I couldn't. And I'm damn good at it. I've been doing this for 40 years. I started at 10. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any additional discussion or, uh, possible motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Councilmember Lynn?
Actually, I'm going to ask the question. Do we know how many lots that are going to be affected by that 10 to 16? Can we, do we know what that number is? I mean, I get the 25%. That's the question I was trying to ask from the beginning. I wanted to know exactly how many of those lots are.
We don't have a count on the total number of vacant R3 lots. The R3 zoning category is very small acre, total acreage wise. Um, then they range in size from, uh, 0.25 roughly acres where you could, there's only three units that can be built on them.
We're having a public hearing right now. So yeah, please, no talking in, in the gallery.
Uh, they range from, uh, uh, small, small pieces that only three units can be built on, uh, up to the larger pieces where you can get potentially, uh, the 16 units now as per acre. If it's a, if it's a half acre parcel, you're only going to get a max of eight units on there under the 16 units per acre rule. So with, with the change. So, um, that would be an increase of three over what would otherwise be allowed on a half acre lot. Uh, there's not a lot of total acreage left, so I can't give you an exact number, but, uh, if it was a bigger district, there would be a bigger impact, but it, there's not many left.
Mr. Gilbert, it looks like Mr. Tounam might have some additional information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a, a study that was done back in 2019. So these numbers are a little, um, probably less, but, um, there was 978 R3 lots and 791 of those lots were developed, which left, uh, it means it was 81% developed. And that was in 2019. So when I said approximately 25% is probably less than 20% by this study that was done in 2019.
Okay. So there's 978 total R3 lots, of which 791 are, were already developed in 2019, leaving an 81% of those lots were developed, meaning 19% of them were not in 2019. So that's five years, uh, ago. Uh, so it's going to be even, um, less than that. Yeah. Thank you. That's very helpful. Yeah. Councilmember Campbell?
Just a clarification. I see that R2 lots was two families. Um, was that before the general plan went into, not the general plan, let's go back, the design, the sewer's design, was R2 still just two families or was R2 five to seven families on an R2?
No, R2 has always been R2. R3's always been R3. And then when you got to the R4 and R5, those are the zoning, zoning districts that changed in 2016.
If you go back on the slides, it says R2 is now five to seven.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question. I'm just, uh, the zoning districts never changed from R2 zoning. Um,
When did it expand from two families, as you see up there, from two families to five to seven families?
The way this, this usually happens is, is that you have to have a minimum of two family based on those size of lots. You'll probably never see five to seven units on those lots based off the size of the lot.
And again, when you, when you start a sewer plan, and I know because I've had to study sewer plans for the last two and a half years, the very first thing they ask you, how many bedrooms? How many heights? What's the heights? What's the commercial? What's the bedrooms? And I just seem like, seems like we have really, uh, came off of that. And I do agree with the gentleman that says that there was a 2016 general plan. That's why last year, I mean, last term that I was running, I was approving these because I assumed that the, the community had all this information in place and that we were doing the right by the community. Now what I visually see is our, our pipes and our infrastructure. I visually see what's going on and I don't really believe that we're in as good a shape as we think we are when it comes to deferred maintenance. So again, I don't know why these changes are happening now if we're getting ready to do a workshop and if we're ready to do a general plan, why is this being rushed through right now? Why don't we just slow down? What was it? Uh, council member, soon to be council member Diaz said once, you gotta slow down to speed up sometimes. And that's the way I feel right now. I think we just need to slow down to speed up because I don't think we can afford, uh, the millions and millions of dollars worth of underground infrastructure that we have seen just by tearing up these roads that we are starting to address. When we're tearing them up, we're seeing what we're seeing and they, they're not stopping there because you cannot connect old pipe and new pipe together and think you can get away with it. It's a nonstop consistency of failure after failure. And I don't know how much we want to keep doing that without the certainty that we haven't maybe over expanded our sewer system. And right now I don't have that information in front of me. So.
It, we're, we're good. We, we've, we've said it a hundred different ways. We, we know where, where you stand, Councilmember Campbell. And that's, that's more than fair. Again, just because it's said, doesn't mean it can be so. So, uh, cities do not go and replace every underground, uh, piece of infrastructure at one time. Of course, there's connections of old, uh, piping or infrastructure to new as you repair them throughout, uh, the network. Um, you, you know, the, this isn't being rushed through. This is, uh, and it's gone through, it's, it's gone through planning and zoning already in a public hearing. It's coming to us with a recommendation from planning and zoning of seven to zero, the full commission voting in favor of this. And we're having a public hearing right now. So nothing has been rushed through. This has gone through the public process. It's going through the public process as we are right now, getting public testimony, um, and, and comments. Uh, you know, we, we, um, it's, it's not being rushed through. So are there any other comments or questions, members of council, before we entertain a motion? Mayor motion? Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt ordinance number 24-1340, amending Lake Havasu City Code Sections 14.02.03.E, Tables 2 to 6, and 14.04.01.A, Point 1, Table 4.01-1.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Any additional discussion? We are ready to vote. Councilmember Coke? Thank you.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you. The next item is item 7.4, adopt ordinance number 24-1342, amending Lake Havasu City Code Title 14, zoning development code Section 14.04.01.A. zoning development code section 14.04.01.A, dot 1, Table 4.01-1, to revise maximum height of developments adjacent to single and two-family uses existing prior to the effective date of the development code in RSGD district from 18 feet to 30 feet. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The RSGD district, which I have the, the purpose page up on the overhead right now, is a successor to the previous R4 multifamily district in the south part of Lake Havasu. It was intended to be a higher density buffer zone from the commercial development in US 95 Highway Corridor and was not intended to have its primary purpose minimized by property owners that chose to construct a single-family or duplex structure within what was previously the R4 district and is now RSGD. And of course, the R4 district had no density limits prior to 2016. The purpose statement examples given for the RSGD district in the development code, and which I have up on the, on the overhead, Section 14.02.03.J, along with the bulk regulations table are all consistent with this district encouraging high-density, multi-story development. So if you look at the table, there's no minimum lot area, there's no maximum density at all, there's no maximum lot coverage, lot depth. The minimum frontage of the property has to be occupied by building is 60% and the setbacks are zero or 10 feet depending. So, and if you look at the examples that are in that same section of development code, the intention is clearly there for, to be a higher density of development. And what this particular text amendment is proposing, and let me advance this here, is very limited in scope, has the potential for a significant impact on realizing the purpose of the RSGD district by increasing the height limit for developments on vacant lots next to existing one and two-family residential within the RSGD district only. And that's a key point, which I'll get to later with the other maps I have. From 18 feet to 30 feet, that will also match the height limit in the similar RM, which I'm using my mouse right there, which is 30 feet in this same situation, next to one and two-family existing residential. And that was a use as existing prior to effective date of the code. This is not a citywide change. By increasing this 18-foot height limit to 30 feet will permit two-story developments next to existing one and two-family developments within the RSGD zone and will be only a single-story increase maximum with the proposed change, not unlike what can be seen in the residential state district surrounding the golf course. And, but of course, those are single-family homes that are one and two-story next to each other. So it's a slightly different case, but as far as stories, it's a similar example. For RSGD lots directly abutting in R1 or R2 zoning district boundary, the 18-feet height limit will still apply as this is governed by a different code section that is not part of this case. The Planning Commission recommended approval decided by a vote of seven to zero, it's July 17, 2024 meeting. Now I'm going to advance to the rest of the slides here. Okay, so on this particular slide, let's start the top. This vacant lot right here is limited to 18 feet next to a single-family residential zoning district boundary in all cases, which it is, right here is the boundary. So it's 18 feet all along here. All these properties are limited to 18 feet. So then you have this lot right here, this vacant lot could be a maximum 42 feet, which is the RSGD district base height limit, or three stories in height with how the proposed amendment. And then you have these pre-existing duplexes right here from 2000, this one's the 2005 origin, which if we go back to that, to that table here, would, that duplex could have been built under the R4 standards in 2005 at 30 foot in height. And this property next to it, because it was built prior to 2016, could not even build the same duplex at a 30-foot height next to it because of that provision. So this vacant lot right now is limited to 18 feet because of that, but would be permitted with the amendment to be a maximum 30 feet next to existing one and two-family residential. So my point with, with this proposal is changing the 18 to 30 feet in the RSGD to be equivalent to the RM district. And the permitted uses in RSGD and RM are very similar on the use table. So that would, there would be an equity situation there as well to where we're not treating the property owners in RSGD different from RM, even though they're in the same exact situation. If someone has a single-family home or duplex that predated 2016 in one of our RM districts, the RM development next to it could be 30 feet. Whereas here, the base height's 42, but the pre-existing knocks that down to single-story 18 feet. And let's see, I want to reinforce the adjacent to single family. So the RSGD is all of this purple that you see right here where the mouse is moving, not the dark purple, that's the commercial, but all this light purple. So this is the western part of the RSGD, north of Highway 95 in the south part of the city. All along where the mouse is running right now is R1. And every property directly adjacent would be limited to 18 feet under a different code provision. That's not what's being requested here. Being requested here will affect, will impact all these internal lots that you see where the mouse is right now. On the south side of US 95, there's a lot of state and federal land that's undeveloped. So there won't be any impact there that it would allow any of these to be 30. And you come over to here, you have R1 again. So all these lots adjacent to R1 would be limited to 18 feet. Up to here would not be the case next to R2. And let me advance this one more slide. This is the eastern part of the RSGD zone. So again, you got R2 here, that would not be eligible because the other provision is only adjacent to R1. But all these lots would be impacted positively with that change if they were next to a single or two-family development that back prior to 2016 decided to build in what was then an R4 high-density district. So that would lessen the impacts on developers that want to do what was intended as the original purpose of the RSGD zone, which is stated here, is intended to provide for high-density residential development adjacent to the prominent South Gate Commercial Corridor along Highway 95 at the city's southern entrance. So this change, if enacted by the council, would allow more equity inequitability in development of those lots. There are several really large parcels still vacant in the RSGD, and there's a lot of smaller ones. So there's approximately 20% of what you saw in those last two maps is undeveloped. And this would help with encouraging development under the purpose of the RSGD zone going forward in that zone. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report. I answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Are there questions, members of the council, for Mr. Gilbert? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
I just have one question. My name is Nancy Bazano-Dicki. Are you preserving view corridors? Because some of these parcels have amazing views on the south side. And that has to be taken into consideration. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Pat Willett again, resident. I don't understand. It seems like you guys are kowtowing to developers, like you're, you're, you're letting the developers tell you how to build your city up. Like the developers coming in and saying, oh, I need, I need a bigger area here to put five more houses so I can make more money. It seems like the developers are, are controlling you guys and telling you guys that, hey, I want to put a two-story here so I can put 15 units in it. We just, you guys just passed the zoning for 16 on a small, single-story. So why do we need two-story? Why can't they put 16 units on some of these lots here at a lower level? That's going up. I don't understand that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so when it comes to this particular area, it actually has to do with the way that the property has developed. So they, they would have the ability to do this height if, as long as the, the lots vacant next to them and they're not adjacent to a single-family home, they would have that ability. And with this code change, it will allow for them to continue to, to have that. We recently did a housing study for all housing varieties throughout our community. The county did one as well to try and address what our future needs are. So talking about the future, where, where are folks going to be able to live and how is that going to happen? These are, are some very small tweaks that might allow or encourage that to occur. It's a, this residential South Gate is a small, a fairly small area over on the south end of town, relatively speaking. But you know, the comment about that we're kowtowing to developers or those types of things, both of these initiatives actually are staff-led. So the staff is seeing the applications come in and seeing what, what is there. Said, hey, this, this makes sense based on what our general plan is. Took it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission had a public hearing. And again, this item's coming to us from the Planning and Zoning Commission with a seven to zero as well. So that's kind of how the process went, went through. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Hello, Bonnie Toy. My question is, if given permission in this district only, will this permission be allowed to be used in other districts?
No, if, if this were to pass council this evening, it would only be allowed in this residential South Gate district.
Will a developer or anybody be able to say, hey, you allowed in that district, so can't you do it in this district?
No, our overarching plan for land use is the general plan. And so the general plan would not support that. So that wouldn't be an option for anyone to come in and ask for that designation if they're not already in the residential South Gate district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vicki Murray. My question on this is, how does that fall into the code enforcement? Zoning, all of those, who manages all of that when you guys keep changing what it is? I don't get that either. I have issues with our code enforcement. Where are they? Can't get them out there on a weekend. You got all of these events going on and they're taking over residential neighborhood for their housing, for their workers. Get them out of our residential neighborhood. Then we'll know what we have in housing when you sell to residents that want to be here full-time to commit to this town. I don't like what you guys are doing, not any of it. You're not thinking through.
Philip Levins. I don't know why we host these meetings. These people's voices are not going to be heard.
Mr. Levins, please direct your comments to the council.
It's a waste of time. You already made up your mind when you came into this meeting on what you're going to do. And these people, it doesn't matter. The people that make up this community, the people that's put in all their money, all their health, all their property, their children's children, you've already made up your mind because like true politicians, we do what puts money in our pocket and we shit on the people that live here. And that saddens me because at the end of it, it's God you're going to have to answer to.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Mayor. Yeah, Councilmember Dolan, please.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, Councilmember Lynn.
Can you go back to the slide with the purple where it has the rolling hills on there?
This one?
Yeah, miss.
Oh.
There it is.
That lot, where the big huge corner lot there, I don't know what street that is off the rolling hills. That curb street, what street is this? What street is this?
Rolling Hills.
It's the one that comes off of it.
And Shoshone.
So that lot right there, it's got the big 2257. It there, yeah.
Yes.
So all those, I, I know, I'm really familiar with this area. Those are all residential houses right there. If we make the change tonight, that big lot there, that 2257, that would, that could possibly be a two-story or higher.
It could.
Right there in that residential area?
It would be two stories. The one, the building that's next door is, this is an apartment complex, it's two stories. It would be able to match that. The base height is 42 feet for the district. What we're trying to do is to make it equitable with, similar to the RM, where if it's adjacent to older properties like that, it can be 30 feet. But it's 18 in this zone.
So I'm understanding what we're trying to do. Do we have to do any type of traffic studies or anything? If that's what you're going to start to move all those, to make those two-story over there? I mean, I, I'm really familiar with this area. Is it already set up that it's, that's okay?
Yes, the, the whole zone is designed for 42-foot buildings, multifamily. It's just there's that provision if it's next to pre-existing single and two-family, it's limited to 18. So we're splitting the difference and allowing a one-story increase, not a two-story increase by going to 30 feet instead of 42 in that situation.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional comments? Councilmember Dolan, did you still want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 24-1342, amending Lake Havasu City Code Section 14.04.01.A, dot 1, Table 4.01-1.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you. All right, item 7.5 is adopt ordinance number 24-1341, amending Lake Havasu City Code Title 14, zoning development code, amending city code sections 14.03.02, Table 3-1, to add backyard fowl as a permitted use in single-family residential districts. 14.03.03, use specific standards to regulate backyard fowl, and 14.06.03, definitions to define fowl. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Arizona State Legislature passed House Bill 2325, and the governor signed it on May 21, 2024, to mandate municipalities and other government organizations to permit backyard fowl. These text amendments will permit the keeping of backyard fowl on single-family residential properties as accessory uses under very specific criteria. This slide I have up right now shows the use table amendment to add backyard fowl. I want to go over what we're doing here. We're, and we worked with the city attorney in crafting this. We decided to go with accessory use category for backyard fowl as the best way to address that. And so what you see is an added accessory use category, backyard fowl with As for accessory here. With the number two, backyard fowl are allowed as accessory uses in these districts for single-family detached dwelling residents existing as of September 13, 2024 only. So what that is essentially, the, the statute states not single-family zoned property. It states single-family residences. So anyone that lives in a single-family home, regardless of their zoning, is entitled to have the chickens, or I'm sorry, the fowl. And then going to advance the next slide here. The proposed regulations mimic the, the state requirements. And I'm going to go over what those are for the benefit of people listening at home. Under, we're adding this to Section 14.03.03.E, use specific standards. And it's subsection nine under accessory uses. A, a single-family detached residence may keep up to six fowl in the backyard of the property. Accessory dwelling units to single-family detached dwellings do not qualify for additional fowl. B, no male fowl may be kept, including roosters. C, fowl must be kept in an enclosure located in the rear or side yard of the property and at least 20 feet from a neighboring property line. The enclosure shall not be more than 200 square feet in area. The height of the enclosure shall not exceed the height of the required perimeter fence line of the property, but in no instance shall the enclosure exceed eight feet. The required perimeter fence shall have at least 80% opacity. The required perimeter fence shall have at least 80% opacity, not exceed a height of six feet unless located within the buildable area of the lot, then eight feet maximum with an approved building permit issued by the city, and adequately screen the fowl enclosure from neighboring properties. D, enclosure shall be maintained and manure picked up and disposed of or composted at least twice a week. Compost and manure shall be kept in a manner that prevents migration of insects. E, any water source shall have adequate overflow drainage. F, all feed shall be stored in insect and rodent proof containers. And G, fowl are prohibited from running at large. And then in the ordinance, there is one final section in there. And that is in addition to the definition section. And I'm going to read straight from the state statute for the how they define that. For for the purposes of this section, fowl means a cock or hen of the domestic chicken. So again, this is all mandated by state statute. And Mr. Mayor, that's all I have to add. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. So the item in front of us tonight is something we really have little ability to do anything different with. So when state law changed, we're having to comply with that. I believe in local control and us having discussions at the local level, which we've had this discussion many times over the years about fowl in the backyards. And and the community input has has left that we would not allow it. At the previous public hearing that we just had, one of the citizens mentioned about, you know, the visitors staying in in properties within our neighborhoods. That again, was state law. State law allowed short term rentals in there. I prefer us to have these discussions at the local level to be able to do this. So we're amending city code based on the new state law change. And that's the action that we have in front of us. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council for Mr. Gilbert?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn.
I just have a quick question. Who's going to monitor like these things, like somebody's cleaning up twice a week? Or how far I'm just, is that code enforcement?
Yeah, Mr. Knudsen.
So we talked about Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lynn. We talked about local control and what's important when our citizens and and make a determination of what what short term rentals should look like, what backyard fowl should look like. This is something that was written at the state level that impacts all 91 cities and towns all in the same degree. And it's written in a way that doesn't allow us to enforce it in any capacity. We we're not going to go into backyards to look at how feet is stored or how the coop is cleaned or anything. We don't go on private property. Now, we will respond when the neighbors complain, if that's the case, based on noise or odors or otherwise. And we'll do our best to address those neighborhood disputes in some cases as best that we can. But yeah, the statute is written in a way which triggers the need for us to write an ordinance that matches the state. And we do not have the ability to enforce it from that capacity. So we'll respond if the neighbor complains. Sometimes there's the ability for us to see into the backyard from the neighbor's perspective that they take pictures and share it with us. But yeah, we have no ability to go on people's property and see how the feet is stored or any of the other things that are identified in that statute.
Okay, I got one other question.
Been poorly.
I don't I don't have chickens. I don't know chickens or fowl or whatever they are. But are they noisy? Like, is there like something with a noise ordinance or something like, will they? Can you call on that?
Yeah, so that, yeah, that's where the the no male or roosters are. But yeah, there's going to be some additional noise. But the the typical chicken, male chicken is the one that makes the most noise. But again, this was something that that we don't really have a lot of ability to regulate. Everything that we have is in this new, this new code that's in front of us as proposed. But again, local control is really where it's at, allows us to be able to do do things that make sense for our community. Are there additional comments or questions?
I'd just like to build on that. This is, like I said, I'm a Republican and I believe in smaller government and local control. And I really wish you guys would reach out to your representatives and let them know that we would like to have a local control. We would like to be able to have meetings in this room about vacation rentals. And we can decide and you guys can decide. You guys, the zoning thing is a perfect example. The state's doing the exact same thing right now. They're literally trying to take zoning away from the city. And it's not, it's not the conservative area that you guys are going into that we want less and less building. It's how can we let them build anything in any free land? If you have room in your backyard, you can put up a casita with no rules and the city can't do anything. So then this is, like I said, I'm a Republican and this is our Republican legislature that is also doing this and taking control away from us, the city, like, you know, vacation laws. There's nothing we can do. There's this foul, we can't do anything about this, nothing. And so it's kind of a joke that we even have to hear just to approve it because there's nothing we can do. We we can vote this down right now, but then they'll take our money away from us. We won't get our state taxes back. So I hope this is frustrating for everybody because it's frustrating for me and it's frustrating for us up here that we don't have that local control. So please let, like I said, and I, we did hear everybody on the zoning stuff and we're trying to adjust things conservatively and in a way that makes sense. But like I said, at the state legislature, they want to have all that control. And and I think you're starting to see some of those things come down the tube. And I think this is a perfect example of, and yes, chickens do make a lot of noise, especially when they get eaten by coyotes. So there's also reasons why, like we are surrounded by desert with coyotes and and different things. There's a reason why we haven't done this in the past. But like I said, this is the state and they know better than us as we've been told. So this is definitely out of our hands. So sorry about that.
Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So. Yeah. So to to answer Councilmember Lynn's question, you know, as a small child, I grew up on a farm and it was great. I mean, we ran everywhere. We'd leave the the house after breakfast. We wouldn't come back till dark and we had chickens. And that chickens make noise constantly. Roosters crow in the morning, hens cluck, cluck, cluck all day long. So yeah, it's going to be an issue. We know it's going to be an issue. It's already been said, we've been told we can't do anything other than some restrictions. And we have made this as restrictive as state law allows us to do. So where will we be a year from now or two years from now? Especially with this heat that we've just had? Chickens don't like the heat. So the coyotes like the chickens though. So we'll see where we're at. But we're being as restrictive as we can be. And we've heard what people have said. There are some people that want chickens. Majority of the people in town do not want this. And there's nothing we can do about it. So, but thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Can you tell us what legislator it was?
Well, well, to make any bill happen, it takes, it has to be done in both chambers of the of the legislatures, the House and the Senate, and then signed by the governor. And all three of those chambers came together. It wasn't one of our local legislators that sponsored it. I'm kind of looking over to Mr. Kozlowski if he might know the bill sponsor. No. So yeah, it's, but you know, as Councilmember Lane was mentioning, you know, short term rentals, when that came to be in 2016, it was 2016 state law changed. And we worked endlessly over every legislative session to get back the controls that we have now in place. In two years, it might look a little bit different where we're going to have to go back and advocate at the state level to change state law when it comes to backyard fowl to address these concerns that happen or give back local control where it might make sense in a more metropolitan area and not so much in an area like ours or vice versa, whatever that makes sense. But it's the hearings that we had on this, and we've had two of them in my time, and they were overwhelmingly not supported by citizens during those those public hearings, during those discussions, but.
Mayor?
All right, this is a public, oh, I'm sorry.
Anybody wanted to look it up? It is House Bill 2325. And you can search that and look at the whole legislative history, who voted for what, if you're interested.
It just go to AZLEDGE, so AZLEG.gov. And right in the upper right hand, you just put that bill number Ms. Gary gave us and it'll tell you everything about it. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
You say that chickens are really noisy. We have a noise ordinance in this town. You're not allowed to go over 53 decibels. So are you going to address that when it's bothering the neighbors?
Yeah, this is going to be a tricky one to enforce. But yeah, we will use all of the provisions that we have in code to do.
Sorry, my name is Lynda Spillman.
Thank you, Ms. Melvins.
Yeah, so yeah, you're going to overload the police department with that because you're going to get a lot of complaints and it's going to take our police department taking care of stupid stuff.
Code enforcement will be the department that's going to be managing this. But yeah, they are going to be doing just what you said.
Yeah, the the author of the bill was Kevin Payne. I'm David Diaz. The author of the bill was Kevin Payne in District 27. It wasn't our, as Cal said, it wasn't one of our local legislatures. And I agree 100% with Mr. Dolan. It's very frustrating. I made a comment that actually got printed in the paper that this was a foul thing we had a vote on. It was a little joke, but it would work. But I noticed in the, can you go back to the slide that has all the restrictions, Mr. Gilbert? I don't know if we could add, but I I know it's, it's like one of those product cautions when you buy the product is they give you some obvious thing you can't do. We don't, we don't notice that, we don't note that there's, it has to have, the coop has to have a roof on it. Even though it's common sense, but you're going to have, somebody's going to build a thing without a roof on it, I guarantee you. So we should, we should make, could we add that to it? Can we put that in the ordinance that we should have a roof on the coop? Because I was also, yeah, it's interesting, but I, this is overreached by the government. I don't like it, but we have no choice.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Councilmember Lane, did you have a comment?
I was just going to comment about the how loud the chickens are. It's not that they're loud and that they're going to exceed that decibel amount. It's just that it's constant. It never stops. It's like that little dog next door that never stops barking. It's it's like that.
Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
You're hitting all my targets. Vicky, I want to know about long term, short term vacation home. What exactly is code on that? And what does it mean? Because I'll use it. I need to know because I'm getting conflict with code and everybody else. Well, we can't do anything about it. I want my neighborhood back. It is a residential neighborhood. What is short term, long term? And when you have events going on, what rights do they have to come into residential neighborhoods and take it over for parking, dumping trailers all day, three days in a row? What is it? I need code enforcement to know what is allowed and what's going to be done. Fines, whatever it is, double the fines, triple the fines. I want the tow truck number to tow off their trailers, to tow out their 18 wheelers. Let's talk about what they're bringing into our neighborhoods and what that cost does to this city. It's all of us. So I would like that in writing. What is vacation? Short term, long term? Residential neighborhood is only supposed to be short term, long term. That's what I'm interested in.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Yeah, Scott Goodman, local business owner, resident, chicken related. I understand noise, I understand all that, that's all fine. I have a neighbor who raises chickens and I love the guy and I love his chickens. And he brings me eggs and they're the funniest looking eggs you've ever seen in your life, but they're nice. In reference to the smell or any kind of complaint from a neighbor, if you're not allowed on their property and there's a complaint, where do you go from there? You talk to the resident and say, look, we're getting a complaint. Can you fix the complaint? And then they don't, and then you come back and say, look, you, it still smells. You haven't fixed the complaint. At what point can any action be taken by the city to enforce any form of a law or just as a public nuisance, for example? Is there anything that can be done?
Mr. Knudsen?
Mayor Shi, members of council, yeah, certainly. So we have, code enforcement is very, very busy.
Yeah.
Thousands of calls a year that that they respond to. And and the vast majority of those are residential complaints. And it's one neighbor having an issue with another neighbor. So whether it's weeds or junk vehicles or odors or smells or neighbors feeding pigeons and it's causing issues with their, their. So we have all kinds and of those types of complaints that that come in. This would fall into that, into all those categories. It would add to the the list of that's there. So essentially, if, it sounds like you have a really good relationship with with your neighbor. But if for some reason, if that that changed and you contacted code enforcement here at Lake Havasu City, we'd, we'd ask you a few questions and, you know, what's going on and what are your concerns? And we'd try to verify if, you know, your neighbor is acting within the the spirit of the law. And if not, then we'd come and visit you and and see what what that looks like. So if you're complaining about odors, we'd come on your property with your permission and and try to realize anything that any negative experiences that that you're realizing. If you have pictures, if you from your vantage point and on your property that that we could see, then then we'd, then at that point, hopefully, we can reach out to the neighbor. And hopefully, we can have a conversation that, you know, did you know that there are things on your property that are causing issues for your neighbor? And that's always the first attempt. That's always the the hope that we can rectify that through, you know, maybe, maybe you didn't know that there's issues that are caused by your neighbor. So it's education first, it's try to get compliance and and try to get neighbors back to be in neighbors as quickly as possible. That can, you know, go through the process and eventually end up with a, you know, after, we would take every effort to try to get compliance and through education and and so forth. But we have issues with through with the code enforcement process where citations are issued. And then it ends up within within the court system so that, you know, we start small. And and there's an ending in terms of citations and and standing in front of the judge.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Quick, quick. Hi, Bonnie Toy. Odd question. The whole short term rental thing and then the backyard chicken. Will people who have short term rentals and Airbnbs be allowed to have chickens? Or, excuse me, bowels on their?
Chicken rentals.
On their property?
Yeah, no, it's a great question, Ms. Toy. It's, you you never know if people are going to figure out, and this is brand new. We're going to have to figure out how how it's going to be, how people are going to do things. But yeah, they would be allowed that by state law.
Okay, is that part of the state law? Or are you allowed to amend that for the city law? Just curious.
No, state law is ahead of local law, so. But we'll advocate once we see the use of this to to make it work for us as best we can. Thank you.
Been sitting too long. After seven o'clock, you know. What constitute a foul? Is a peacock a foul? Is a macaw parrot a foul? Is there, is it just a chicken? Is it banning roosters?
Yeah, Mr. Gilbert read the official definition according to the state statute earlier.
Oh, they have a specific definition.
Very specific, yes. And he, he.
We need a rooster patrol. Is that what we need?
We might, we might need that. Yeah, would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing now we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lynn?
Can we add what Mr. Diaz said about the roof under that section C where they describe what the coop looks like? Can you add a roof on there? Can we add that in the description?
Yeah. Ms. Gary, do you have thoughts on that addition?
We, I'm sure that we can add some language to clarify that if you want to add that in the motion just to ensure that it's clear that there's a roof on.
I mean, maybe that will discourage the coyotes. I don't know if there's a roof on it, you know, I don't know. Wouldn't that be, can we do that?
No, I think if we make the motion and suggest in the motion that we want to ensure that the ordinance requires a roof or a full enclosure.
Yeah, full enclosure maybe.
Yeah, I think if you want to take a, you want to take a stab at a motion?
I know.
No? All right. Yeah. Would? Vice Ma, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, sure. Mayor motion?
Please.
I move to adopt ordinance number 24 dash 1341, amending Lake Havasu City Code, sections 14 dot 03 dot 02, table 3 dash 1, 14 dot 03 dot 03, and 14 dot 06 dot 03, admitting that there's some verbiage pertaining to a full enclosure for the chicken coop.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke? Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.6 is approved task order number nine to the Master Professional Services Agreement for Design, Bidding and Construction Management Services for the Runway Lights and Signs Improvement Project with. Improvement Project with CNS Engineers, Inc.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. So this, this project is basically, the task order is for the design through the bidding process and construction management to remove and replace three lighting systems. This is gonna be a good complement to the new runway and new taxiway. The taxiway lights had been replaced during the taxiway project. The three systems are the runway lights themselves, and this is the pictures along the top there, runway end identifier lights and distance remaining signage. The grant is bill-funded bipartisan infrastructure law funding, grant funding, and you can see the, the total costs and the matches along the bottom there. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Just, I don't want to miss an opportunity. Whenever we talk about the airport, a lot of folks that might not use it on a regular basis or might not be an aviation enthusiast wonder, you know, what happens at that airport? But the airport is a huge economic driver for our community. So if you receive mail or an Amazon package or any of the like, you are a user of the airport. Many of our medical offices, staff folks that fly in on a daily basis and provide medical care for our citizens. If you're in need of an organ transplant, they're flown in or flown out, whatever way it might be coming. So the airport is huge on top of all of the, the airport aviation folks that use it as well. And as Mr. Kane mentioned, you know, this is coming before us with nearly 95% grant-funded for, for this project. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Kane before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion?
Yeah, Council, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah. I move to approve task order number nine with CNS Engineers, Inc. for Design, Bidding, Construction Management Services for the Runway Lights and Signs Improvement Project in the amount of $205,449.
Okay. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item 7.7, approve amendment number two to the Engineering Task Order Number PA 0000443 for the Horizontal Collector Well Rehabilitation Project with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you. It's an honor to be in front of you tonight. I'm here with just a brief presentation for you on the Horizontal Collector Well Redevelopment Project Amendment Number Two that I'm coming before you recommending approval. Just as a fresh reminder, the Horizontal Collector Well Rainy Well is located down on the London Bridge Beach. It's not too far from the existing bathrooms, which some people get a little confused with which is what, but it's pretty clear to us. It's a beautiful facility and it is one that we hired Jacobs Engineering Group back in 2021 to do some analysis and recommendations for us. And then we came back in August of 2022 in a minute with number one task in which we looked at some other things that we felt needed addressed with the Horizontal Collector Well. We actually went out in December of 2023 for bids and got nothing, went back out in May of 2024 and got nothing. So we went back and did some re, some value engineering to, to see how we can make the, the project maybe biddable for those that were out there. We are going with the approach of focusing on just the discharge pumps and the actual pump systems themselves and not, not the other aspect of going down into the, the rainy well and addressing the, the laterals that, that we were seeing some, some sand in, but that'll be a different phase. But this is very important, continuing to keep it operational. So that's the purpose of this amendment. Jacobs has put in extra time in the reevaluing engineering of it as well as we've incorporated the CM component on this, so the construction management, hoping we get a successful bid on this upcoming bid that we're gonna be going out here end of August. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Hart? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lane?
I'll make a motion, but before I do, I just want to talk about how important this rainy well is. We've been talking about this rehab for eight years, trying to get this worked on. For 20 years, this was our only source of water for the entire city. And through the years, we've been able to now get to the point where we have a redundant water system and we can take this offline and do the work on it. This rainy well, for those of you who haven't seen it, it's big enough that we put divers down inside of it. I mean, it's huge for the amount of water that the city has. So it's too bad that we couldn't get everything done all at once, but it is a very special piece of equipment, but it's very important to the city. So with that, I move to approve amendment number two to Engineering Task Order Number PA 0000443 with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. in the amount of $88,749 and authorize the city manager to sign amendment number two on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch? Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.8 is approve change order number three for Vados Zone Well Eight and Facilities Rebid Project with Schofield Civil Construction LLC. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. With that, we'll switch from blue to green. So this is our Vados Zone Well Eight and Facilities Rebid Project in which I'm coming before you recommend approval of change order number three. For those of you that may, might not be familiar with the Vados well, it's actually a series of wells that are out by the, our Lake Havasu City Airport out there, just to the south of our North Wastewater Treatment Plant. We had a project that we awarded here probably about nine months ago, if I recall, and that project was, its purpose was to build and construct a new Vados well eight in its completeness, which meant getting a pipe out to this new location, having a boring drilled to it, as well as having all the proper fencing and electrical and piping that was needed. We came back after that was awarded, we were able to find some other finances and we had a change order one in which we incorporated the ad-alternate of the original bid in which we drilled well nine. The contractor was there, it was a really a good move on our part. And then change order two, which was internally using force account, that simply addressed some of the ramp work on well nine, hoping that at some point we would be able to connect well nine and complete it so that we would have both wells operational. And that there is where Vados well nine is. Then here as a, as a demonstration, the completed Vados well eight is there on the left in the upper. It has the equipment, it has the fencing around it, the solar's being put in starting next week, so we'll see the electrical site completed. And then existing Vados well nine currently is just a ramp at the pad with the actual well itself already drilled, just waiting for the equipment and the piping, the electrical on the fence to go on top. So this change order adds the completion of well nine, which again is existing piping and equipment. It's projected 150 calendar days. We're being told that there's potential for material delays, but I'm very optimistic that it will not be that long. If it were that long, it'd be January 2nd of 2025, and this change order is in the amount of $364,400, and I'm at this time recommending approval of this change order. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Hart? Yeah, Mr. Lane?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And no, I do not have a question. That was a good presentation. I just kind of wanted to talk about the Vados well, because I've had a few people reach out to me. You know, we hear from people all the time. You know, my phone number's in the paper every week and it's on the city website, so my, my cell phone goes off quite a bit. And I've had people say, why are you drilling wells so close to the sewer plant? That doesn't make any sense. So I just kind of wanted to go in, these wells aren't for pumping water out, these wells are for pumping water in. Once we're done treating water, it has to go somewhere and we don't just let it run down the street. We have to pump it back into the groundwater supply. So that's what the Vados wells are for. It's not for pulling water out of the ground, therefore putting water back into the ground, because we can't use all of our affluent water. Even though we water as many parks and golf courses and everything else that we can do, we still have a lot left over and that's what these wells are for. They're wells going down, not wells coming up. Thank you.
Great point. Any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Yeah, please, just make ready the podium and state your name for the record.
Leon Pfeifer. Live here. Just have a question. A lot of people live here have no idea what these wells, I know this returns water back in. How well, how, what's the diameter of this well and how deep do they go? Just an idea. Also on water that you're taking up, how diameter is the well and how deep you have to go to get water? And how much water is it in a well when you get it drilled? Just an idea.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, that's a great question. So these Vados wells are 48 inches in diameter and approximately 170 feet deep. They do have a filtration system in them, they have a column pipe that runs down the center of them that's perforated, it's 12 inches in diameter with aggregate all around it. The city wells that we have, we have what's called a north well field in which we have approximately six, if I remember off the top of my head, those are 12 inches in diameter and those are 600 feet deep. And then the rainy well, as we were talking about earlier, is our very impressive well, first of its kind when it was built in 2001. That is 16 inches in diameter and 100 feet deep with laterals that go out between their ranges of 40 to 150 feet. And those laterals are 12 inches in diameter.
Yeah. Great answer, impressive. Would anyone else like to address city council during this public hearing? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve change order number three for the Vados Zone Well Eight and Facilities Rebid Project with Schofield Civil Construction LLC in the amount of $364,400 and no cents.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.9 is approve requirements contract for refurbishment of public safety vehicles with Wild Rose Motors LTD. Chief Paloffis and Chief Sterling.
Feels like a scene from Step Brother.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I wanted to introduce you to Chief Pete Paloffis. He has offered graciously tonight to present this topic to all of you on our refurbished contract for public safety vehicles. And I'm here in support and to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Chief Sterling, I appreciate it. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, public, I have a short presentation for you to kind of give you the story of the refurbishment program that Chief Sterling started, and I'm just piggybacking off of it for this fiscal year. So Kelly? Sorry?
Steve has it coming up, perfect.
Sorry, Steve. So our refurbishment program, we basically started, and this is not, nothing to do with our engines or anything, this is support vehicles and police patrol vehicles. So we've had a production problem with Chevy and Ford for some time since the pandemic of not getting these vehicles in production. So we've started looking at different alternative ways to refurb our assets that we currently have, so we have safe and reliable vehicles for our employees. And safety is utmost important, especially when we're doing these refurbs. So Chief Sterling found a Wild Rose out of California that does big contract refurbs for CHP, California Patrol, and other agencies that have been refurbishing theirs because they've gone through the same problem of waiting two to three years to get newer vehicles. Now, this is a, a method that they basically rehauled the entire vehicle, paint and from engine trans, new brakes, shocks, and it basically, the time limit for them is they can get it done in 60 days instead of basically two to three years. So it actually, it's a quick turnaround. Cost comparison is, it's a little bit saving, obviously, from a newer vehicle, but that's not the, the whole purpose of it, is just getting safe, reliable vehicles on the street to serve our beautiful community. So they've been in business for 25 years, they do Crown Vics, Chevys, they do specific ones that are police intercepts, our Chevy Silverados, and it's, it's a program that we started. The, the main point is they have a three-year unlimited mileage warranty on the remanufacture. You don't even get that with a new vehicle. So especially with the police department, they put a lot of high miles on their vehicles. This is just a great program while still maintaining the original equipment manufacturer, that's what they're using. So to kind of give you, this is the vehicle that we're looking at for our old command vehicle, is, you can see the paint's faded, and it's not so much the paint that we're looking at for aesthetics, it's the engine, it's the suspension, it's the brakes, it's the transmission. They're rehauling this entire vehicle. And the beautiful thing about being in Arizona is that our frames don't rust. We don't have the, the salt, the, the snow. So this is actually a viable program for us. Chief Sterling is, this is, per this agreement is three vehicles, one for fire and two Ford Explorers for the police department. Which was nice is Chief Sterling had his first refurb done about a year ago, which was a Ford Expedition for the Animal Control. Has been very pleased with, with the outcome, still, still running really well, and we're still gonna pilot this program. Hopefully, production starts basically, I guess, ramping up and especially when you have another agenda item coming down to a way that if we start purchasing them all at once, we'll have more purchasing power, so we don't have to do this refurb program or we keep on going with the program when, when we, we need to. So this is Chief Sterling's recent one, and you can see the, the before and after. This is right when it got from Wild Rose and then they had it lettered too. So, I mean, on the outside it looks great, looks like a new, new vehicle, which is, that's what it is, is a refurb. So what's included in the refurb, basically it's comparison savings between a new one, it's a remanufactured engine trans. Again, these are all with original equipment manufacturer parts that coming from Chevy and Ford. Again, the warranty and it's a safe, reliable vehicle for employees to serve our community. So we're not taking the safety aspect out of it. If there's a defect or a crack in a frame, it's not gonna be refurbished, it goes through a full inspection. So here's some before and after pictures of vehicles that have been refurbished from other organizations. This kind of gives the layout of everything that's gonna be replaced or inspected for the engine and trans. Again, another before and after picture of several vehicles they have done. The brakes is upgraded to DOT racing brakes, the Chevy master cylinder, brake lines, ABS. So it's, it's taking, it's a restoration of a vehicle. Suspension is all new suspension, A arms, bushings, wheel alignment, so you're, you're getting a new vehicle. And this is just everything in our agreement that what they're going to be held accountable for getting done. And again, they're getting this done in, in 60 days. Again, just further pictures on Wild Rose, the steering, what, what they, the components that they're going to replace. The interior, they actually check all the seat belts, make sure that they're working properly, any defects in the dash. They reupholster the, the seats to, to bring it back to its original standard when it came out of the, the factory. So here's some other miscellaneous things, and I know I'm going through this quick, if you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, or I'll bring Chief Sterling back up here to, to answer them. So the thing is, at the end, it's gonna be inspected. This is a well-known company that has done thousands of vehicles for the, for the- This is a well-known company that has done thousands of vehicles for the, for the police department, has had great outcome. We're very satisfied with what they've done with the refurb. And what we're looking for is approval for three vehicles at an amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, I hope. And again, this is just a pilot program that we're still just getting the vehicles quicker so we have reliable vehicles. And again, we're hoping that Ford and Chevy get their production and that we can get newer vehicles when we need them. So.
Chief Paloffis, are there questions from members of the council for the chief? Yeah, councilmember Campbell?
You already know the direction I'm going to go. Do you know I trust, trust you chiefs? You know that?
Yes.
And this, when I first saw this, I was not happy with this at all. And the reasoning why I wasn't happy, as I explained, I had a brand-new Audi, a deer hit it, my airbags imploded and the insurance company said, nope, you don't get, you don't, we're not going to fix this because there's too much liability. When my husband looked it over, he's like, are you kidding me? Seat belts, everything else. If there was an accident with one of you guys and one of them, you're talking about our police, both of you are in very risky businesses. The only part that you're getting me at is that you, to me, this is not a money thing to me. This is clearly a safety thing to me. And I would hate the liability of the city as well. God forbid, one of these lug nuts or one of these items in here, it's always, all the way down to a gas cap, fails on us. That makes me nervous. I want you guys in the safest, best vehicles possible. I don't want you guys in refurbs. And the taxpayers are right now giving us plenty of funding to do a lot of great stuffs. But you're telling me you need these vehicles? And you want me to push this button? Yeah?
Yes, we, we wouldn't be coming to you if we didn't feel confident enough of the Wild Rose refurb program. We've already had it done. They've done thousands of vehicles based on their clientele. And the thing is, this is again, a pilot program. The thing is, we are about safety, but the turnaround on these vehicles are, are less than what we get, the new vehicles. I mean, two years to get a new vehicle? It's, it's just having a reliable vehicle for serving our community. And, and we're all about safety too. We want to make sure that our employees are safe. These aren't vehicles that we're refurbishing that were in vehicle crashes. These are just long miles on them that have been in our fleet for a while that we feel comfortable enough to get refurbished and put them back out on the street.
Right. And with my car too, it was just a deer and just because the airbags imploded, it's a brand-new car, only six months old, the insurance company said, nope, we do not want you in a refurbished airbag. So this is what I'm relating, relating it to because I trust both of you guys, you know that. I'm going to trust you on this one. But moving forward, I really hope that we can, you know, visually project and get what we need in place and sell these vehicles to, as you like to say, Mexico.
Auction them off. But, but the thing is, I just want to just reiterate that these, none of these vehicles that we're picking for refurb have been involved in an accident. I, I would not refurb an accident-prone vehicle because of the safety reasons. These are vehicles that have been operating successfully and all we're doing is this refurbishing them, bringing them almost back up to new. Thank you.
Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. I'm going to put this from a different point of view since I was a policeman for thirty years and drove patrol vehicles at probably unsafe speeds at times, time and again. I think I have some paperwork in my file to prove that. Anyway. From what I understand, you guys just took the, the three vehicles that were the best vehicles, just had high mileage. Other than that, there was nothing wrong with them. They're just starting to fall apart from a mechanical point of view. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm going to speak for the vehicle that I have and then have Chief Sterling come up here and speak on the police ones. We've taken the best ones that we have that feel that the refurb program is beneficial for the city and for our department to refurb. And, and we're just trying our one this year. I actually, for us, we got the idea from Chief Sterling to just try one out and he's very happy with it. But Chief Sterling?
Yes, thank you for the question. Yeah, the two that we're looking to send are ones that are mileage out, the point system that we utilize, they're due. And so we felt this was a good way to build, to get some vehicles quicker. All right. Ultimately, going into this process, the one that we showed the picture of that has the new decals on it, you guys didn't even hit on that. Okay, that vehicle looks great, right? All right.
I like to.
So I was hoping that we were going to have that a little bit sooner so we could have gotten a little bit more test driving out of it, moving into this portion of the project, right? But it didn't. That one's just now going into service. You can see the new graphics on it. But ultimately, that one we sent because the engine had blown. And so that was why we used that as our first actual police vehicle that's used on the street to get that tested out with Wild Rose. And so it's just now getting into service. But going back to the, the credentials of this company, other agencies that have utilized them, we're happy with this product so far.
Thank you. A couple of things that I do like that, that you're doing here with this. One, you're saving taxpayer dollars. You're basically getting three vehicles that are relatively new. The other part is they're under warranty and you can, the way I read this, they're under warranty and you can go to any dealership for the warranty work. So you can get the warranty work done right here in Lake Havasu City through our current dealers. So I commend you for looking a way to get vehicles to your personnel faster and also saving people, the taxpayers' dollars. So thank you for that. I, I think it's a great idea. And chief, I like the new graphics with the bridge on there.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of the council?
I have a question, just a comment. Just to clarify, this is no different than what we do. I mean, we talk about liability. Yes, there's certain vehicles, if they were in accidents, okay, that totally makes sense. But there's no difference in what we already do in our maintenance yards. We replace the brakes. We do, you know, we, we are making changes to the vehicles and keeping them maintained well and all that. And I imagine, of course, this company's highly insured and, and you know, no different than buying it from Ford. If a lug nut's not on tightly, it's still liability at any level. So, I mean, as far as risk-wise, like I said, we're choosing the right vehicles and.
Yeah, we're, we're really even choosing the right vehicle and we're going to fall on the, the warranty that they provided. I mean, they're, they're running the business, we're paying for our product. We expect them to give us a premier product for what we're paying for.
Perfect. I like it. Thanks.
Any other comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
My name's Philip Levens and I work in the automotive industry. And the biggest problem we're having right now, I'm all about keeping our police officers and our firefighters safe because that's what keeps us safe. I've been in the field for thirty years, I restore cars, anything from nineteen thirty to the present. You can't order a fuel tank for that Ford Explorer because it's discontinued. They don't make it no more. It's obsolete. The biggest problems with these cars is they sit idling. The heat underneath them is crazy. It rots the rubbers out, it rots the fuel tanks out, it rots everything out. And the big manufacturers are pushing the green deal so badly that you've called a dealer and tried to get a fuel tank for that Ford Explorer, they don't make it no more. You can't get a used one for a junkyard because they won't ship that hazard material through there. Brakes, calipers, all that's maintenance. Like I say, I'm all about restoring cars, but the cost and the liability is just crazy. They need new vehicles that, brakes are thinner now, they warp is bad. You guys all drive new cars, you've all had the brakes and rotors have to be changed. It costs you thousands of dollars to change the spark plugs in it. The, the industry's just gone crazy on automotive and you can't buy parts for these cars no more. So I just wanted to let you know on that situation.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Leon Pfeifer again. This all sounds good. But now, have you checked with your insurance liability company? Are they going to go along with a refurbished vehicle, insure it against problems that you have? I think it needs to be talked about before you get into these vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. Yeah, Mr. Knutson?
If I can, yeah, I mean, certainly. So when we make, when we bring decisions and the chiefs go through a process to identify what, what's occurring here, there's a lot of research that gets done, right? So we're not just bringing something before the council. So that, you know, we, we have our, our fleet that, experts that led by Bill Young within the organization. We have conversations there to make sure that what we receive is what we can maintain properly. We have through our, our risk pool, we have seventy-some cities in Arizona that belong to the same insurance, nonprofit insurance. And we vet all, all of these, these instances through the proper resources. So yeah, we're, for us to, for us, the staff and for the chiefs to come before council and the public to say, this is something that, that we, we want to, we want to do. It's because the, all the homework, the research and analysis has taken place to get us to this point. So we, we feel really good about that when we, we're very critical. We ask the tough questions to make sure that this is something that's going to, going to, going to hold up to the best of our, our ability. If I can, and not to hurt, bring up some bad feelings that the chief, Chief Sterling experienced earlier today, but we, we purchased five trucks, pickup trucks for police, something we've been planning for, for quite some time and, and through the budget process and so forth. We ordered those pickup trucks in August of two thousand and twenty-three. So that was twelve months ago when that, when that took place. So we had five pickup trucks that were going to be delivered today. They're driving up from the valley and driving up to Lake Havasu City. One of those wasn't, the delivery wasn't received, it wasn't our employees that were driving it, but they were being delivered to Havasu. One of those trucks was in an accident with a semi and was totaled. So we'll get four of the five pickup trucks that we ordered twelve months ago. So again, cost is important, creativity is important, you know, taxpayer dollars are important, but we just, we need some vehicles and we need to put our firefighters and our officers in, in vehicles to get the job done, so.
Mr. Knutson?
There was an article showed up on my phone that Pasadena changed all their vehicles, the police chaser cruisers to electric. That's, that's.
Would anyone else still? Yeah, would anyone else like to address the council?
I will, resident. Just checking, I was looking on their website right here for the same company and they do sell used ones for a lot less. There's a two thousand and eleven Ford Crown Victoria Police Interceptor, forty-three thousand miles on it for eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. So I'm thinking like we're spending, what, forty thousand dollars to refurbish where you have a used police interceptor right here with only forty thousand miles on it, barely under, after warranty and it's eighteen-nine. So I don't know if we need to look a little farther into the Rose because they're also, they're also a used car dealership, WildRose911.com is a used car dealership. You can look on there and see all the police interceptors on there for less money, that's all.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Is there any additional?
Mayor motion?
Yeah, councilmember Lane?
I move to approve the requirements contract with Wild Rose Motors Limited and refurbishment of public safety vehicles in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents, fees and taxes included, plus applicable freight charges. Authorize the city manager to execute the contract and authorize city staff to exercise the option to annually renew. Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Lane, a second from councilmember Koch. Any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, chiefs. All right, item seven point one zero is approve the cooperative purchase of a powered mobile six column lift system from ARI Phoenix, Inc. Mr. Young?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Vehicle Maintenance is requesting the permission to replace their current four-post mobile setup. It's sixteen years old and this new six post will come in at seventy-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and ten cents. These posts are used to pick up all of our large and specialty equipment. We can go from two posts to eight posts, all inline to do whatever we need to do. They're used each and every day, all day long. They're very much needed. With that, I'd like your permission to move forward with the purchase of the ARI Heta Six-Post Lift.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Young on this item? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, councilmember Campbell?
I move to approve the cooperative purchase of a power mobile six column lift system from ARI Phoenix, Inc. in the amount of seventy-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and ten cents plus applicable taxes.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Campbell, a second from councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Council, councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item seven point one-one, approved cooperative purchase of four two thousand and twenty-four Polaris Ranger XP one thousands for the Public Works Water Division and two two thousand and twenty-four Polaris Ranger SP five-seventies for the Public Works Wastewater Division from Polaris Sales, Inc. Mr. Young?
Yes, Mayor and council. These Polaris's, the four XP one thousands are used for our meter readers to go around the town reading our water meters. The two wastewater division ones are for their employees to go through their plants and take care of the chores and stuff that need to be done to keep everything running in the right direction. They come in, the XP one thousands come in at twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-nine cents each. The five-seventies come in at eleven thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and thirty-seven cents each for a total of one thirty-four, six thirty, thirty-four for the purchase. And that includes a little up, upfitting with roofs, windows and doors. I would like to ask your permission to move forward with the purchase of these vehicles for the total of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-four cents.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there any questions of Mr. Young, Mr. Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Yes, sir.
Last year when we, we bought some, or maybe the year before that, but some of them had air conditioning units on the top, which we had never done before.
Yes.
With the roofs and the windows. How's that working out?
It is working out pretty good. The meter readers like them. We've had some issues with some hinges and stuff, but overall, it's worked out fairly well for them.
And do these have the air conditioning units?
The one thousands do, the five-seventies do not.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Young on this item? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Mayor? Yeah, councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve the cooperative purchase of four two thousand and twenty-four Polaris Ranger XP one thousands and two Polaris Ranger SP five-seventies from Polaris Sales, Inc. for the combined amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-four cents plus applicable taxes.
Second.
We have a motion from councilmember Dolan, a second from councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? I'd just like to mention that we're, it seems like we're purchasing a lot of things tonight, which we are. This is our third meeting into the new fiscal year for, for the city and the new budget. So we're going through the process of multiple months and months of planning, sometimes years of planning, and now we're actually just going through and doing the final action for that. All right, we are ready to vote. Councilmember Koch?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And then our final public hearing of the evening is item seven point one-two is approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five purchases of thirty-seven Ford or Chevrolet vehicles from Santan Auto Partners LLC, DVA Santan Ford and Midway Chevrolet Company One LLC. Mr. Young?
All right, this is the first time for us attempting this, to do it all in one shot. All right, this is the first time for us attempting this to do it all in one shot. So let's go through the city fleet life cycle. We look at our budget. We make our purchases according to that budget and prioritize what we are getting. We maintain the fleet. We evaluate it, and then we move to replace and auction. We use a nationally recognized replacement evaluation point system, including age, mileage, type of service, reliability, maintenance and repair cost, and the condition that it comes in. Our points are set at 32 where it needs replacement on our basic vehicles that we do not determine as extreme use. Here are some pictures of our current ones that are getting replaced. Why they might look good, they are 2005s, 2007s, and some parts are definitely beginning to not be readily available. More pictures. This is a graph of the 37 vehicles that are over 32 points that were chosen for replacement this year. This is an Excel spreadsheet that shows each department, but each department gets their own spreadsheet at the beginning of every fiscal year as we prepare for budget. And we don't recommend what they replace, but we let them know what's ready for replacement due to the point system. The directors, superintendents make those choices and then take it before city manager. These are the last three years coming up to 2024, what was budgeted and what got spent. You can see a pretty big difference between the two. A lot of this is due to the production of the new cars, the allocation of the new cars, cancellations of orders, and the new one today, one getting totaled on the way to be dropped off to us. So we're trying to get everything set up at the beginning of this year. So we have all our POs in place. When the order windows open from the dealerships, we can get our orders in. That doesn't necessarily mean we're not going to miss the allocations, but there's different order windows for every different vehicle, 1500s, 2500s, 3500s. They all go different times and you have to have everything ready because by the time you try to go get that quote, get a PO, come to council, get it ordered, order window is closed, nope, we're not going to do it. It's a very difficult game right now and it's been that way since since the COVID era, actually. That shows the obstacles that we've been dealing with. And that is it. So I'm asking for the ability to purchase 37 new vehicles or equipment mounted vehicles in a tune of $2,505,015.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there questions or comments from members of the council?
Mayor, comment?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Wasn't it your birthday yesterday, Bill?
Yeah, what do you want to talk about next?
I do. So I just want to say happy birthday.
Thank you, man. 25 never felt so good.
Councilmember Lane, did you have a comment or question?
I did. Yeah, this is something that the city manager and I have been talking about for several years now about doing this instead of piecemealing. For those of you that come to the meetings all the time, it seems like every meeting we have, we're authorizing the purchase of one vehicle or two vehicles. And when we approve the budget at the beginning of the year, we know these vehicles are already in there. They've been budgeted. That's what we've done. But then we wait to buy them and Mr. Young reiterated this. A big one of the big problems we're having is if we wait to buy the vehicles where we're just doing it two or three at a time, by the time he's able to do the paperwork, to get the purchase order, then bring it to the city council, and then get approval, and then go back and finish the purchase order, the vehicle is no longer available. We've already approved this in the budget, so it just makes sense to me that we do this one time, beginning of the year, and then as they need the vehicles throughout the year, he has the authority to do the purchase order and get that vehicle, including the wreck ones. So I think it's a great idea and I appreciate it. It's been something that I've been working with Mr. Knutson on for a couple of years now to to move this direction. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lane. And in those discussions, one of the benefits that we're getting too is a larger volume discount on top of it. So when we're buying onesies and twosies, we didn't we didn't have that benefit. So any additional questions? Councilmember Lane?
Mayor, thank you, Mr. Young, for all the extra slides that I requested. The question that I have is, are all of these vehicles that we're requesting, are they going to be easily accessible? Are we going to be in the same situation where the chiefs were, are we waiting two years for any of these vehicles? Or will they be pretty accessible?
The timeframes are improving. This last one, the set of five was a year. The next one, we were at eight months for I think four of them. So they're getting better. I can't I can't say they're going to be easily accessible, but I can say it is getting better.
Any other questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
You want to do your motion, David?
Sure, I'll do it.
All right, Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, exactly. You guys just don't like the long ones. Well, it is past my bedtime. I move to approve the cooperative purchase of 37 Ford or Chevrolet vehicles from Santan Auto Partners, LLC, DBA Santan Ford, City's Cooperative Purchase Agreement Number 500289 and Number 500467 for midsize and heavy duty vehicles, and Midway Chevrolet Company, One LLC, City's Cooperative Purchase Agreement Number 500347 and Number 500550 for midsize or heavy duty vehicles. Authorize the city manager to execute the cooperative purchase agreement 500550 with Midway Chevrolet Company, One LLC for midsize or heavy duty vehicles, and approve the purchase as budgeted and outlined in the attached fiscal year 2024-2025 vehicle purchasing list, subject to release of an amended manufacturer's official published price pricing and discount off of the manufacturer's retail price by AZSPO, and authorize the city manager to approve an amended adjustment.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote. Councilmember Coke?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young. The next item on the agenda is item eight, which is our call to the public. This is where citizens have an opportunity to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments are limited to three minutes. There is again a countdown on the screens around the room. Yellow, it means you have 30 seconds left. Red means or maybe red means you have 30 seconds left. Yellow means you have a minute remaining. Again, these are items that are not on the agenda, so we won't be able to have a two-way conversation, but we can listen intently to your comments and direct staff or respond to criticism. You don't have to sign up for a call to the public. We didn't have anyone sign up for call to the public. We'll open that up in just a second, but I did want to just cover something real quick. You know, many citizens have been feeling the impacts of the increased electric bills with Unisource. We've seen on social media that many frustrated citizens want to address the city council on the issue, understandably, but the Arizona Corporation Commission, as was mentioned earlier, is a five-member commission that is elected by the citizens of Arizona, and they have the jurisdictions, the complete jurisdiction, over rates and increases in the rates from Unisource. So if you have any any concerns with that specifically, I would encourage you to contact the Arizona Corporation Commission at the Utilities Division. You can find it on their website, or you could email utilitiesdiv@azcc.gov, or you can also call them by dialing 800-222-7000. Or you can also contact Unisource Energy to learn about the steps that customers can take to help manage their bills by calling 877-837-4968. So again, I understand the frustration of citizens. It's obviously difficult for for seniors and families and others to absorb these these high costs that seem to have come out of out of nowhere into our monthly budgets. My colleagues and I here on the council, we also are having the surprise bills that came our way and having to figure out how to pay our bills that that came as well. So again, energy rates are not in the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. We don't have the ability. We're advocating just as citizens as as those that are frustrated throughout our community and and hopefully we'll be able to to get something together on that. But I just wanted to make sure that that we understand the the jurisdiction of who has responsibility or the ability to even affect change in that area. So I will now open the again, you don't have to sign up, so I'll now open up the call to the public. Just come up to the microphone, state your name for the record, and let us know what's on your mind. Yeah.
First one. Thank you, council members, and the mayor, and the audiences. My name, I'm called John Davis Kibedi, and I go by Davis. I'm very happy to be a part of Havasu Community. I've been living here one year, and I used to live in California for 19 years. So in total, I've been living here 20 years. Anyway, I have two questions. One is a compliment, another one is a question. I moved here last year and in California. We had a public health, like you have like something overview. So here, when I got here, I really appreciate this city. It's a really nice city in terms of the community, law crime, there's no crime, we sleep well. I'm really very appreciative. But in terms of public health, it's very expensive. I don't know how people with low income afford just to go to the hospital and make payments and things like that. I don't know if you are planning to build like a public health where people with low income can afford to live in this city. Another compliment was the the question that gentleman raised, where you live, there is people who came and they put trenches and, you know, they put some cables there and they left. And when I was driving, I saw that and I said, oh, this is not nice. I've been just making compliments about the city. It's beautiful. The city are nice, the roads, and now look at what these people did. So when that guy, that gentleman raised it, I was like, that's really very important. We need like supervisors to fore up and make sure the city stays like the way it is. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, Nancy Bizan, Dicky, and my partner Ruby, we have found ourselves overnight community advocate for change in our utilities. We realize you don't have any say, but we held a petition signing, excuse my signuses, a petition signing yesterday generated 500 signatures. We are doing another signing at the library Tuesday between 3:00 and 6:00 in the conference room. Please come. We have petitions here for all of you to sign. They out and out lied to us. Not $11 to $14 a month. I gutted my house. It was brand new 2015. Gutted foam insulation, all new energy saving appliances, hybrid heat pump water heater, all new Anderson windows and doors, and an iron thermal brake front door. We only run our pool pump off peak three hours. And this last year, we just remodeled again. And my bill has gone up tremendously. Not $11 to $14 a month like they promised. Try $200 and $300 a month. I leave my smart air conditioner set at 85. There's a lot of stories like mine. Some are even worse. People on budget billing, $200 a month just on a bill for a $1,000 inflation bill, not to mention all the double surcharges.
We want to know, is it okay if we stand in the back and if people want to sign this? Or is that legal to do here in the building? We don't know if that's okay or not because we found out we couldn't take care of this here, but we do have a signing here. If that is okay, and then also that we are going to get ahold of the people that you discuss.
Yes, ACC and also the Attorney General, because what they have done is a crime. Thank you.
Could we get your name?
Ruby.
Ruby Pippin.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pippin.
I am sorry.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you for being here and sharing your story. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public?
Hi, my name is Dave Winehammer. I'm resident. I'm also middle school bus driver. I have a problem with the Thunderbolt Middle School with there's all the curbs there that are connected to Thunderbolt. There are no painted red lines for the cars to be back away. They butt up right up to the corners. It's hard for our buses to get around. The main reason why I'm here is because two days ago, I went around the corner trying to avoid cars, going real slowly, and had to stomp on my brakes because a kid on electric bike came up right up next to my wheel. I don't like that, and it bothers me. So I need the city's help to get some paintings done at least 100 feet away from the corners. I know that's normal ruling and stuff like that, but having the painted sidewalks to protect that, that would be very helpful. I'm not sure about any other schools, if they need it or not, but I know I just strictly do middle school. I'm a route driver. Also, too, I don't understand why we have middle schoolers on electric bikes that fly by me on the bus. It's kind of ridiculous, really, to have their mentality of fly and go high. But I don't understand that when I'm going 45 and I see a kid on electric bike just going right past me. There's got to be some kind of limit to, you know, underage kids going that fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public?
My name is Scott Goodman. I'm a local resident and business owner. I have a very specific issue. I own a place called Lucky Lou's Antiques on Mesquite, and there is a empty lot that Jeff Gilbert owns that's behind me that we it's a dirt lot that both the Quick Stop, which is a high-traffic, high-volume business, and my smaller business have been using that dirt lot for well, for me for four years with no issues at all. And apparently we have some new and aggressive, and I get it, code enforcement and beautification people who are out patrolling, doing their job, which is, I appreciate that. They came into my store to complain that there was pallets that the solar place, that Rick from the solar place had left for people to take from their deliveries, and it's summer, so there's not a lot of Californians taking pallets. So they asked them to be removed. Somebody had dumped a trailer load of garbage, just basically dirt and tree trimmings. So they were upset about that. But they told us that we can't park there anymore because it's unimproved. It's not on the street. It's it's set back 75, 80 feet or more from the street. It's not even visible really from the street. So it precludes us from parking there, which presents a real problem for us from business owners to operate because we have seven parking spaces for two businesses. And that dirt lot, the solar place used, we had used, Lucas had used at the other place, no issues at all. And now all of a sudden we're precluded from parking there. We want to know what we can do about that, if there can be gravel put there to make it quote unquote an improvement or something that we can do so we can utilize the parking that's available to us that Mr. Gilbert was kind enough to let us use.
Thank you. We can't have a two-way conversation right now.
No, I get that.
Yeah, we can. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
What would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? All right, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Next item on our agenda is item nine, current events. Are there any council committee reports?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
I have an excited one. The chamber has the chamber has changed a lot of their direction lately, and one of them was Winterfest. Some people love it, some people hate it, but some of the concerns that we had was it was always out of town visitors that were using this main street area, and it's the chamber. So what were their concerns? So the first thing they did was they reached out to all their chamber members. So the first thing they did was they reached out to all their chamber members and offered a little discount if they wanted to be at the Winter Fest this year. Ironically, in the first month or a couple of weeks, there was forty-five members that actually took, took this, took advantage of the slight discount. I understand there are still like half, half spaces, we had like seventy-five spaces left. So if any of you were interested in wanting to be part of it, reach out to the Chamber of Commerce. And just to give you a comparison, last year we only had nine chamber members at the Winter Fest and now we're starting with forty-five, so that's pretty exciting, so there's my update there.
Great, thank you. Are there any other council committee reports? All right, item ten is future meetings, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-four at five thirty PM. It'll be a regular meeting. Item eleven is future discussion items, are there any future discussion items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, now that the election is over, I'd like to have a discussion on people that sit on boards and commissions for the city and they become official candidates for the city council, at what point should they step aside?
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Yeah, a second.
And a third?
Sure, third.
All right, that'll be on a future discussion item coming forward, are there any other future discussion items? All right, item twelve is motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned, thanks for being here, be kind, we'll see you next time.